Welcome to the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the City Council. Up first is Master Plan Development under Item A. You should have all received in your packet some information requested of the City Council from the Planning Board related to goals for Master Plan Development and also a timeline for Master Plan Development. So at this time, I'll open up the workshop here for folks to discuss the issues. So, floor is open? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you. I didn't want to jump in there too quick. Thank you, Anna Doyle. I'm just going to express, you know, some of my thoughts relative to Master Plan Development and having had a little experience with it on the outside. I think that we've recognized the development potential on the Route 1 corridor heading out towards Scarborough as an area that has some potential for the appropriate use of a Master Plan Development tool. I think it's very appropriate for large tracts of land to be developed as a single concept. And I believe that was the direction of the previous ordinance, and when we converted to the new ordinance, the MPD was sort of put aside for some reconsideration. So, my own personal opinion is that I think the MPD is a very good tool that can be very useful to us in achieving our comprehensive plan goals. We have a new comp plan, so I would suggest that, you know, we try to link whatever efforts we make in this area to the comp plan. But I also, our experience with the Master Plan Development process on the Lincoln Street, Bradley Street property, I think, aside from the project itself, illustrated for me some of the potential weaknesses that our prior Master Plan Development ordinance had, and making sure that whatever we come up with that's new enables us to avoid the vagaries and issues that we had that first time around. And I also, from the understanding, there was a significant amount of work already done on this, so I'm not sure we have to start from scratch, that Mike Ian and Bob Hamlin spent a great deal of time working on a document that, I'm not quite sure where it is in the process, but I think there's no need to reinvent the wheel. You know, you've got probably a pretty good starting point to work with. But I would just, you know, go slowly and develop a tool that can encourage development that is consistent with our comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think Counselor Hatch pretty much covered what I was going to speak to. I mean, I think it's a tool that we're still seeking, you know, speaking for myself. I think that, you know, it's a tool that council is still speaking. I was curious if there's an update as to where the Planning Board is with that.
So, the process, as you know, we transitioned with staff, and I think during that transition, it was one of the things that had to be put on the back burner. I do think part of the reason it's on our agenda tonight is because we realize it's important to get that conversation going again. There was a tremendous amount of work already done, but now with new planning staff, you know, I think they need some time to catch up to what our goals were with it and then keep working through that document so that we can use it better. And I agree on the comments so far related to the comp plan. That was definitely one big weakness of the prior version of it that we were working with. It just had absolutely no reference to the comp plan whatsoever, which defeats the purpose of such a large-scale development tool.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I think I agree with most of the comments so far. I would also point out that some of the aspects of the comprehensive plan includes making livable communities in which we can reduce traffic, we can have pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, you know, traffic. We can put services and offices and workplaces in close proximity to residential units. We can create denser residential units, therefore allowing us to preserve green space and natural resources. And those are all features that can be accomplished with the proper use of Master Plan Developments. It's one of its benefits is they can build those things into the design. These livable communities then allow people to age in their homes because the services they need are in close proximity, so there are a number of benefits of them. And that's some of the strengths of the tools and ones that I would like to see kind of built into the process.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. One of the things that, when I was on the planning liaison last year and Master Plan was brought up, unless you were right, Director Hamlin was just getting ready to leave, staffing was changing, and it kind of got put back a little bit, and that's understandable. But I know that one of the first questions that we were having, or we as a council were looking at last year discussing it, is I think one of the first steps is to take the whole area of Portland Road and break it out by section. The first thing would be to, what areas do we want to have certain development, whether it be commercial or residential, in? Does it go from Millbrook to Cascade, right side, left side, those types of things? So, to kind of quadrant it out, I think, would help start the process. You get up closer to Blue Haven, you have more of a residential area than you have down Millbrook, which is more commercial. Might want a different aspect in that area, some more amenities that might help the residents. So I think that might be one of the first ways to tackle it, is to take it out, kind of grit it out, and what areas we want to see where. And I do think it is a priority. I do think that we need to focus on it on both sides, get it moving, get it going. Then, once we have that, then we can start working on ordinances and looking at zoning and see what we want to get in there.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to piggyback on what Counselor McPhail said. Since I, the Counsel for Ward III, I've always looked at sort of the Route 1 stretch from down, from the Scarborough line down to Millbrook as a sort of untapped potential of what we could do in terms of development, especially when it comes to affordable housing, you know, be that as it may, at the same time, also economic development. That part of Route 1 could really be an economic engine for the city. And for that reason, I've always been an advocate for a Master Plan Development, because I think it's, that stretch of Route 1 is the most perfect place in the city to have it. Logically, also, the part of Master Plan when it comes to affordable housing or workforce housing, or however you want to term it, I think it would be prudent to have that on the books as soon as we can. Obviously, you know, well thought out, because as you're seeing with this development that's going to happen down on Lincoln, I mean, they're getting the okay from the state when it comes to traffic, though, but anyone in this room, whether you're for development or against development, knows that traffic-wise, it's going to be a tremendous situation down over in that part of the neighborhood, while on Route 1, you have easy access in and out of the city for any housing or places to live that are added to Route 1, though, I mean, in terms of Route 1, easy access to Exit 42, Route 1, easy access to 36, the back roads. I mean, it might require a light, though, but we're not Wells, we have a light every, you know, block, though, so, I mean, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to happen. And you see, like, for example, the development, the Chamberlain Development that's across Moretti Seafood, far back from the road, they have one bank that's right up at the street's level, and plenty of room for development there that is business-related, and you could copy that in various different forms all the way down the way, and I think it would be a boon for the city. And to Counselor McPhail's point, though, obviously, we want to go similar to sort of like the old pattern that we had in terms of contract, not contract zoning, in terms of zoning, so we have an idea of where it's appropriate to have more business versus more residential, though, but making use of that stretch of Route 1 all the way down on Millbrook, I think, would be prudent for the city long-term. Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, overall, I believe pretty much in consensus with what most of the other councils have mentioned, I do see Master Plan Development as a tool when used correctly. For example, when you're building things, you always want to use the appropriate tool for the appropriate design that you're making. I've seen Master Plan Developments in practice down, I have a half-sister who lives outside of Maryland, Baltimore-specific, and they've pretty much used that model. The way I've looked at it, in my understanding, it's a city within a city. So if you allow this type of tool, you've really got to make sure that the greatest benefit is to the city and their citizens. So, making sure that, and again, this is in the details, but I'm just kind of explaining it to why I'm interested in this and want to get it kind of formulated, is that you can make requirements in a Master Plan Development to include community centers, to include ancillary police departments, ancillary fire departments, things like that. Again, the scope would be what dictates the level of city services that applicant would be doing, but again, adding community centers, adding not just open space, we have plenty of those where they just kind of create a field and they don't do anything with it. You're living there, one, Mr. Mayor, right? It was just an open field and it was...
Ross Bridge.
Yeah, Ross Bridge, thank you very much. That's, open space is great, but actually usable open space. So these are the parameters that you can set when designing what a Master Plan Development, what the tool will look like. So again, overall, I'm interested. It just has to be the right tool for the right developer, for the right time, et cetera, with all the right conditions. So again, I think it is something that we should be re-looking at, updating, aligning it with the comp plan, making specific crossway into the comp plan where you're actually identifying the comp plan within MPD ordinance, whatever that comes out to be. But yeah, no, I think it can be useful, but again, it's the right tool. It may not be the appropriate partnership for every developer, but as long as, in the end, the city's needs are met before the developer's needs, I'm kind of on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're speaking the same language, and I don't want to be too repetitive, but I agree with Counselor Archer. It's certainly a tool. I don't think it should be, you know, applied unilaterally throughout the city. You know, to Counselor McPhail's point, I think we should really go back to looking at this area and better defining where we want them, kind of back to those nodes concepts that we had. I think just, if you look at the development that's occurred in the last year and a half to two years, it's really astounding to see the uses that are now allowed out there and are coming into fruition that, when two years ago, we were talking about Master Plan Developments, we were talking about housing, they conflict largely with housing now. So we kind of have to figure out where, you know, those housing uses should go versus, you know, something like what's going at the, or soon to be going at the Saco Drive-In site, which is a tractor-trailer sales. I mean, I think if you look around the area, in fact, I know for a fact, because I've heard from some of the residents, over at the cottages, the contract zone that was approved several years ago for those cottages next to the Learys Farm, they're really shocked by what has occurred since 2017 when those started. So, it's just, kind of go back to that node concept is what I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch?
Yeah, the node concept was something I did not mention, but I would be in agreement. My understanding is something like 2,000 acres out there, and I think that we need to select a subset of that area somehow, some way, to allow this concept to move forward. We've been telling you what we would like. Can you tell us what tools you think you need? Do you have everything you need? And if no is an appropriate answer, because we'd like to hear that.
Thank you. So, Planning Board, you have heard from the council in relation to the requested items that you wanted, that you had put forward to the council for consideration. So now that you've heard from the council as a whole, now we would like to hear from you as to ideas and, again, tools that are, that you're needing to fulfill the Master Plan Development policy.
Jen, you want to start?
So, I think, is this the one? Is it? No? It's green. Is that? Maybe I just... Okay. In early 2021, before then Planner Hamlin left, we had done some of that mapping, I think you were liaison then, and we had identified some of those breakout areas for the Master Plan Development along the Portland Road. But what has happened since is, and I don't know the exact percentage, but I would say most of this year and at the end of last year, a lot of the applications that we're seeing are hitting that area, if not directly impacting traffic that flows in and out of that area pretty heavily. So, this is good timing to hurry up and put some kind of a identifier on the table and on the maps. In terms of what, as a Planning Board member, I see being important to have is if there are some city-level incentives for backlot development. The front lot, that's where everybody wants to build their businesses immediately, great visibility, low impact in terms of driveway access or roadway access reasonably. So what are some of the incentives for backlot and infrastructure going into those backlot areas? And this is just my own personal pet peeve, not speaking as a board member maybe, but as a citizen. That Route 1 street view, as you're driving down through, as these new commercial businesses, very industrial-looking, very, we're getting a lot of applications for not aesthetically inviting to bring in residential behind. So, thinking about what the facade requirements and what, you know, we can do for encouraging those, and then what's the city's appetite to include auxiliary amenities in those areas? I know the city has a lot of parks they're already maintaining, but is there some park incentive or some trade-off that the developer can get a tax credit, a TIF or something, if they maintain green space, because that's always important for residential development? But it's a direct cost to the developer, because those are spaces they could sell or rent or otherwise put into their return of investment. So thinking about what the city could do to offset those in terms of city-maintained amenities.
Rob, then Matt?
So, to hit a little bit on what everybody said, I've had the opportunity, in my daily profession, to work with other communities on Master Plan Development, and previously, ours was a little bit too straightforward. We're really sort of site planning the process, and I've seen it more successful when it's conceptual and schematic in nature, and when projects are presented that show how it can help the community and how it benefits the community, you know, similar to what Counselor Archer was saying. Those seem to be very successful, and I think it's okay, as a city, to say what we want and what we don't want, what we think is going to work and what doesn't work. So I think this is a great tool to help us do that. I think a little bit what Jen was saying, speaking for myself, I don't think we want this Saco to look like Route 1 Saugus kind of thing. So, I agree. I think this is a good tool, and it should be sort of dialed back to a conceptual and a schematic phase of how do we, how does a developer see this project coming together as a whole, and how does it benefit the city as a whole? How are they going to help the city grow, grow and thrive? So, I think that's, from a Planning Board member, I think that's how we become most successful.
So, I see a couple of points here. First, on Route 1, there's a lot of privately-held land, and there's a lot of it that has been developed at various times throughout the years, and it's probably one of the less attractive areas of Saco, certainly. I think we all agree with that. So, with that said, though, as a Planning Board, we are somewhat of a regulatory board to a degree, and we've got zoning that's already out there, and we can't say, no, we don't want it because we don't like it. We can work hard to try to persuade the developer to make it look a little bit more attractive, but if someone owns a piece of private land and they choose to build a used storage place across the street from another used storage place, we can't say no. But what we need to do as a city is designate and sort of, as Counselor McPhail said, sort of coordinate, or coordinated areas and say, from this street to this street, we'd like to see X. But the city has to say that, because otherwise, people are buying this land with an intent to do XYZ business, and they come before us, and if it fits within the zoning, and they're not breaking rules, and we've given them as much direction on how to make it look as attractive as possible within their budget, away they go. So if we designate upfront, in these areas, we'd like to see this type of development, then people buying that land will do that. We can't just sort of wait, and when they come before the Planning Board, say yes or no. Number two, nobody's mentioned anything with regards to rural master planning. There's tons of times people become before the Planning Board saying, we want to see the farms stay farms, and we want it to stay rural the way it is. I don't see a lot of farms popping up and that aren't, or there's land there, but a lot of these farms, the farmers are aging, they're looking for ways out, and there's nobody lining up to buy these. You know, Jason, in his document that was submitted, talked about a carrot or a stick. Maybe we think about, how do we do carrots to encourage people to come in and start or take over these farms and continue that legacy versus just waiting for someone to show up, because it's not going to happen, you know? And I know, I've got a friend who recently, who, their daughter, who's the age of mine, 24, 25 years old, who is moving back home from Idaho where she worked on a garlic farm, and she's going to start a farm, and they bought land and they're building this garlic farm, which is great. So how do we have that here? You know, how do we encourage people to come and buy this land instead of a farmer selling it off and turning it into three-acre lots?
One other thing I didn't mention, but I've mentioned to a couple of board members in casual conversation, I think it may be worth consideration to have a defunct sign ordinance coming along Route 1, the number of signs that are dilapidated, broken down, and people pull, it might still look like a viable business, but it isn't. It might encourage the wrong kind of business to go there or discourage a business that might be interested based on what it previously was used as, and I don't believe such a thing exists, and it might be an easy change that could dress things up.
Counsel, you've heard from some of the Planning Board members. Any response? Counselor Berman?
Sure, thanks. Some great ideas there. Jen was asking about incentives for things like green space. One of the benefits I see of Master Plan Development is sometimes you can violate the restrictions of the underlying zone. So, for example, we can trade density for green space, right, or trade other uses for green space, and so while tax incentives or other incentives may be useful in that sense, so too can rearranging the way the developer can make profit by allowing more units than they would otherwise be able to put onto that land, but in a different configuration, therefore opening up some green space or preserving some natural uses. I also like the idea of making it schematic. One of the things that had confused me in our previous conversations were some of the differences between sub-development, site plan, and Master Plan Development reviews, and they seemed like they had a substantial amount of overlap, and making the Master Plan Development one kind of more schematic and conceptual, to me, would clarify some of those differences and add a level that has some added value, right? It would be a different level of review. That made a lot of sense. And I also just resonated with the idea of thinking about what kind of development we want and how to provide incentives for making that happen, both kind of along the Route 1 corridor with perhaps more mixed commercial residential use, and in more rural areas, if we want to preserve the rural character of the area and agricultural uses. So those are just some pieces that I really honed in on.
Thank you. Counsel Archer?
Yes, Planning Board member, provincial, you'd mentioned that there are some communities out there that are pretty good, already have some good blueprints. Do you know which ones those are?
Yeah, most recently, Scarborough has been pretty successful in projects that I've worked on, and South Portland as well.
Anything further from the council? Anything further from the Planning Board on Master Plan Development?
So, I think that, as Counselor Archer suggested, and I agree, and Scarborough Downs is a good example, you've got a big, huge chunk of land, and you can say, all right, in this quadrant, we're going to put this type of business, here, we're going to put housing, we want apartments in this area and so on. Here, we've got little pieces of land left going up Route 1, and again, if we, it's going to be hard, we can't just erase it. We, you know, the land between 195 and TA went away a long time ago, and it is not a master plan. It could have been, but it wasn't, certainly. But I think that what, again, what we need to do is with the vacancies that are left, that are, you know, raw land that's left there, if we identify what we'd like to see in those areas, give some encouragement, other ideas of ways to attract businesses to just build what we'd like to see, we can do that. But we're not going to change the current businesses that are there as they, but I actually like the idea of the defunct sign ordinance. That would be awesome if we could get, if business goes down and you shut down, the sign goes away. That would be really good, and I think that would be pretty easy for the city to put in place. But yeah, master planning is, I mean, I've worked on a ton of them when I was with C.B. Richard Ellis, but again, it starts typically with a huge chunk of land, like you were talking about with your relative space. You know, there's a lot of those in Maryland and Florida where they just had massive land, and then they built a city, as you say, right? So we're kind of working with something that's already built, but let's kind of hold off on what's left and not just let it build willy-nilly, which is, again, if somebody comes to us with an idea that fits within the zoning, we can't say no.
Anything further on Master Plan Development? Okay. Moving on to Item B, which kind of fits into Master Plan Development as the boards we're talking here, is Portland Road zoning. Any discussion on Portland Road zoning that hasn't already been mentioned from the council? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. One of the things with Portland Road that I would like to see discussed and even possibly brought up, and from my understanding, is during the ZORs process, for whatever reason, missed, it was never added, is the discussion of, and this will fall into Master Plan as we're trying to look what areas we want, something is if there's any chance of us, when it comes back with the ordinance for recreational marijuana, is to have that added. I do not want to see if that comes back to us, having one zone, industrial park road at two-mile stretch, completely cramped. So, that would be the only other location that I could see a potential fit, and would like to see that possibly discussed of rezoning some portion of that, too, so when it comes back to council for the vote of opting in or not, that it might, that it is on the table. that it is on the table.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Counselor McPhail's comments on that. Um, I think, overall, though, when I think of the Portland Road zone, and having lived through that two-year process, I understand the intent was to shrink the zones, but I felt at that time, and I still feel today, and I think we've already kinda been talking about, or at least around this topic, is the zone itself is too large. It probably should be split into at least two, and that way we can actually hone in on the uses that we want in those zones, because they are distinctively different. I mean, I think of the area, you know, on the McDonald's, right, as it, as the zone starts, that area, you know, to Fun Town is distinctively different than further up. Um, and I think, you know, as I stated earlier, we're starting to see uses that I certainly didn't envision being out there, um, at the time, and I, I'm still kind of curious how, you know, that proposal at the drive-in, uh, fits the zoning as is. But I think that we kinda should hone back in on what our vision is for the Portland Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail?
Yeah, and just to Rob's point earlier, too, you know, we've spent so much time and effort on this end, making sure that this is the entrance to the city. Well, that is from the other side as well. And it is coming, over the years, now is not the nicest drive-through. So, I, I think it is important, again, working with master plan, working with some potential zone changes, so that it is an attractive area. People coming southbound from Portland, Scarborough, are coming into an area that looks nice, is beneficial to people, and people could potentially, um, you know, do business, say, "Hey, maybe I'd like to live here." Um, so, it is, it, we don't just have one entrance, we have two.
Any further discussion on Portland Road zoning? From the council? From the planning board? Any discussion on Portland Road zoning? Any suggestions to any improvements, uh, on zoning that the council can make?
Um, I, I agree with Counselor Johnston. Um, I, and then moving towards these potential nodes, um, I've been thinking about it as well, and perhaps it's divided a little bit differently. Like you said, it, it's our second entrance since, into the city. Um, and, yeah, I think, maybe to simplify my comments, is I, I think it, when people enter, we want them to be excited and happy and proud, and, um, I think some of the current uses, um, don't make me feel that way. So, I think that's, that is what I think my personal goal would be, is to have peo- have people excited, you know, when they, when they enter.
Okay, any further discussion on Portland Road zoning? Seeing no further discussion on Portland Road zoning, moving on to item C, parking. There was a parking, uh, downtown parking study completed. Uh, there was a presentation at, uh, one of the previous council meetings. Any discussion on the parking? And what was the, and follow-up from the downtown parking study? I know the park, downtown parking study did recommend some, uh, potential one-way streets in the downtown, uh, to offset traffic concerns, uh, and parking issues in the downtown, uh, but I don't think the, both the planning board nor the city council have really acted on those. Uh, so, this is now a time to talk about those, and, and see if that's something, uh, a direction we would like to go. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Uh, as I recall, my takeaway from the parking study was that there's actually sufficient parking in the city, although there are maybe some small areas and some small times, uh, when it becomes hard to find. Uh, one of the larger issues was the inconsistency of signage and, and wayfinding and awareness about that parking. Uh, the sufficient parking existed, uh, but it can be hard to tell. Uh, and, and there's also an issue of utilization, the way the lines are drawn, and, and the way the ownership falls out. Uh, sometimes utilization is difficult, uh, but, but those are the takeaways for me. It's, it's really about signage, and it's really about wayfinding, and it's really about consistency in how we describe and label parking, and, and maybe those are things that could get incorporated into our process. But, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, this is always a fun topic for me. Uh, living in the downtown and, and dealing with it on the daily, uh, I, I certainly appreciate the report. Um, but I will say that it recycled about 40 years' worth of traffic safety reports I've, I've read over the last 10 years. Uh, so, obviously, there were good ideas that date back to the 70s that just haven't been implemented. Um, so, I, I think that clearly we should probably try to move forward with those, but at the same time, I can say that tho- the idea of, uh, shared-use lots, it didn't come to fruition for, for a reason. Uh, I, I would hope that it may change, but given that we, at the same time, you know, talk about increasing densities in the downtown, well, where do we think those densities are going to locate? They're gonna locate on abandoned lots, more than likely. Uh, so, you, you kinda can't have both at the same time. So, again, while I, I appreciate the report, it seems to me, from my perspective, it's a short-term solution, if we can ac- actually implement it. And what the report lacked is what I really wanted, which was a long-term solution, is where do we locate this parking garage that it will be needed if, if we get the density that we keep talking about? Um, so, for me personally, that's definitely still on my radar as, you know, yeah, in the, in the short term, let's try to address this, but we really need, before these other lots get built upon, where's this parking garage gonna go? Um, you know, there's an abundance of asphalt currently, but it doesn't mean that we can all just start parking there. Um, so, for me, that's what I kinda took from the report, and I would hope that, you know, both bodies work towards locating, you know, figuring it out in the next 10 years, because as we can see in Bitterford, I think they've already filled that parking garage, and it looks, from my perspective, probably three or four stories too short. Um, you know, I, I've certainly have heard through my times in the city that, um, you know, people aren't gonna drive, but it's just not reality. All you have to do is look across the street here, a development that we were told, "Oh, it's 50, it's gonna be 55-plus in millennials, and they won't have cars." Well, they're filled to the max, and now, as they build this new, uh, unit, or this third phase, they're filling all of Store Street Lot. It's identified in this report as a location for overflow parking. Um, so, I think we already have the challenges before this report was even published. Thank you.
You. Counselor Archer, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Arch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, overall, I think the next couple of years with parking's not a concern, but I, I think we really gotta consider what the project across the street, the church that they turned into residential. I think that where we may need to have parking built in, if you're trying to build up increased density in your developer, I think we gotta have mimic, kinda what happened right across the street here, in which that first floor is parking. Um, actually, a couple of years ago, I think Mr. Biggs and I were talking about, um, there was a way that they built the garage behind the storefront, or something like that? So, the front, the frontage of Main Street would actually be sto- store space, but behind that was actually the parking behind. Um, so, I think that when we start talking 10, 20 years out, and we start building up downtown with the density, we're gonna have to build the parking with it. Um, as what's being mentioned, uh, we do have some asphalt across the street here that's not really used. Um, it's, it's connected to the church, correct? Um, uh, in time, I mean, we have no clue, but we've gotta find ways to increase parking, not really, I mean, I don't think the one way will really do anything today. Um, I think we'll have the same traffic patterns, just moving around, but the, their parking would still be about the same. But we definitely have to look at parking, what the 10 years down the road looks like, um, before we, uh, have issues related to that.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I agree with, uh, Counselor Archer, is the idea of incorporating, um, parking on the first floor is a, is a practically practical idea, because like I said, our, our, our footprint of available asphalt, uh, to Counselor Johnson's point, is limited. Um, so, obviously, you know, being able to get two birds with one stone is a practical idea, but, it's a long-term thing. But my comment was to be more, because the mayor had brought it up in his introduction to this section, was, uh, the one-way, uh, ideas that were put forward in that study. And frankly, um, this is something I am not in favor of, um, for the simple reason that our friends up in Portland experimented with that in the 70s, with the whole sort of idea of many highways to get you in and out of a city as, as, uh, fast as humanly possible. And while it helps when you have a city that large to take the pressure off, so it doesn't take you a half hour to get, like, you know, 10 blocks, for a city our size, really in a large town, this already has Route 1 getting in, already has 112, and we already have easy access to interstate, um, when you have one-way streets, um, it's not going to have a real, too practical effect on parking. All it's going to do is exacerbate a problem that we already have already, which is people making use, although, the, the, people do this on the back roads, but they also do this on Route 1 in broad daylight, just bombing through our city, making, taking perfect exam, uh, ta- taking perfect, um, advantage of, uh, our, our police officers not being able to be in every place at one time. And how many people have come before this council over the years and complained about people bombing through the back streets to try to, you know, get to their destination quicker, though, and, uh, you know, people are out in a residential area, and, and, let me tell you, if you add, uh, one-way streets, even on some of our local, like Route 9, or, you know, or the, the part of Route 1 that goes through, or the downtown, or, you know, even this street, um, people are not going to obey the, uh, the, uh, traffic speeds, and it's gonna be a recipe for disaster. Um, and, like I said, our friends in Portland are trying to undo that. I mean, you hear, I'll talk about State Street and others, you know, trying to go back to, uh, two ways, um, and also, they took down their medians in between to try to encourage people to slow down, encourage, encourage people actually to walk, use the streets as crosswalks, though. I mean, you got to the point where people wouldn't wanna cross Franklin or Terriol, and they acted like, uh, Manjoy Hill was, you know, might as, but, but might as well have been 20 miles away from the downtown, and acted like two separate cities. So, if you wanna have a walkable communal feel to the city, you're not gonna get it with a one-way street, because you're gonna have plenty of people that are gonna be like, "It's not worth the risk of trying to cross a one-way street, just the way people drive, when they have that license to drive and know that there's no one coming the other way." So, um, you know, ru- one-way streets give me the willies, and, uh, I am hugely not in favor of them for the city of Saco. I don't think our city's built for them. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I can appreciate, Counselor, um, your opinion, but I, I think my perspective of it, and it's often as a pedestrian in the downtown, I have been a supporter of the idea of one-way streets for as long as I've been on council. Uh, it predates back to the 70s, when Water Street became a one-way street, and at the time, it was to have them alternate all the way through the downtown. It just never, uh, came to fruition. Now, I certainly can see, from a car-minded person, uh, where there'd be challenges and, and how it would add to the traffic. So, it is something that we'd have to approach, um, you know, cautiously, certainly. But I, I do look at the model of Water Street and how it's been, what I remember it as, previously walking. Uh, it was a street that, as a child, I would, I would never, my parents would tell me, "Don't walk Water Street." I always walked Store Street. Um, and the reason was because the, the speed was so excessive on that street. Now that they've bumped it out, put sidewalks, fixed the retaining wall there on the river, it's made it so much more pedestrian-friendly and family frien- friendly, um, and it follows the complete streets model, which, you know, I, I think, for the most part, uh, our Department of Public Works tries to follow. Um, so, I, I would encourage it, if, again, considering if we took in the, to traffic, I think it is something we should continue to potentially pursue. I mean, I think on a street, a street like Pleasant Street, for example, that's already very narrow, and cars rush up and down that, I think making it one-way would actually be ve- very beneficial. Um, and actually, might actually encourage, uh, some, some redevelopment of that street. Thank you.
Okay, from, now that we've heard from the council on parking, uh, from the planning board, any discussion on parking related to, uh, what's been set up here this evening, and/or the parking study that was done and completed? Matt?
Yes, thank you. Um, a lot of these thoughts are good. My thoughts on one-way streets, I think, I think they can help. More narrow streets help bring speed limits down. People tend to drive, uh, slowly when the roads are more narrow. I, I agree with Counselor Archer, it's not really a long-term solution. Um, I'm thinking more big picture. Downtown, similar to what Counselor Archer said, requiring residential development, all their parking has to be off-street. It cannot be within the first 20 or 30 feet. We have to have units at-grade. Um, we can talk about screening. Um, I think in the report, forgive me, I can't cite exactly what section, but I think there was some note that we had quite a lot of parking requirements. Um, so, maybe dialing that down a little bit, doing something with guest parking, but, but maybe thinking overall of, of areas that we can utilize and extend parking out and around the city that we could try to utilize. Other communities have similar situations where you can count parking on-street, a certain distance away, um, that can be successful. Um, so, I, I guess I'm thinking more of, of sort of big-picture, long-term solutions of, of, you know, helping create some sort of resolution there. And I, I think it starts with, um, putting the onus on the developer of saying what, what we want. We, we want parking screened, we want it onsite, um, and we want to create realistic numbers. So, I don't wanna say we wanna necessarily reduce parking, but create a realistic number of parking. Uh, we don't want islands of asphalt, you know, everywhere, so, um, but create a, a realistic current and, and future demand. Obviously, it's very difficult, that's why we're talking about it, and why there is no set resolution now. Um, but that's sort of, I guess, sort of my thoughts from the planning aspect of it, is let's, let's work to, you know, to, to get those onsite, get them screened and, and covered, and, um, we can create incentives if, if we like, but, um, but that's sort of the, my initial thoughts on kind of how to start that long-term solution.
Thank you. Any further, Rob?
Yeah, um, to the one-way street idea, um, I think at one point, they were talking about one-way on Main Street, one-way on Route 1, which was proven to be a disaster up in Augusta, where they were one-way for a long time, and then they found by going two-way, there's much more use of downtown, businesses flourished, and things really changed. So, I would disagree with that, but I'm totally with, uh, Counselor Johnston on Water, obviously being one-way. I have talked many times with the, uh, Saco PD, and they would really love to see Store or State two-way because of their business. But then Pleasant, Thornton cuts, cross, one-way, one, turn around the other way, you know, and so on and so forth. Thornton being one that would end at the signalized intersection, so that you flip the others. And then, uh, on the other side, Middle Street, High Street, you can make these streets, you can do a lot of traffic calming design that will, as Water Street has turned into a slow street, you could do the same thing on those, and have one-way, say, Middle Street going up and High Street going down. Uh, and then you've got Pepperell, School, uh, School Street and, uh, Free Street, you can do some one-way design there that would help slow people down through the downtown. And then even as far as working through Common and, and James Street, a plan there that would then bring the speed in the neighborhoods down. You've still got Route 1, uh, and, and Main Street to navigate both directions. And I think it would be awesome to design something like that and work that out, because it really would make a big difference to, for the folks that live downtown and the folks that navigate. And it would increase parking, because it would allow you, when you have one lane, instead of two lanes, to have end-in parking, for example, on one side of the street, parallel on the other, and you could increase your parking there really quickly. So, that's just a, some thoughts there with the one-way, um, on the cross-streets downtown.
Thank you. Any other discussion on parking? Seeing no further discussion on parking, moving on to item D, contract zones. Planning board members, you might have, uh, seen on one of the previous council meetings that, uh, there was discussion in, under new business, uh, regarding contract zones, uh, and a change to the contract zone. the contract zone ordinance that was brought up by Counselor Hatch. And at this point, we're interested to hear from the planning board on contract zones and any information or ideas that you have related to that information. The council did weigh in a little bit on contract zoning the night that it was presented, but also, you'll hear from the council tonight on their ideas for contract zoning. But we are at almost 7:30, so.
We've got a couple of opinions here. So, contract zones, I believe, are a good tool for when you have a zone that is zoned, but there's another use that maybe was not anticipated that pops up. And without rezoning the whole zone, which would create maybe an imposition for other parts of that, because it's a wide zone, you can work with specific properties. But with that said, we've got, and I think it was quoted, about 50 some-odd zone, contract zones out there. I'd love to see an audit of all those contract zones, because I would bet 10 of them are no longer in use, or never were used, or just sitting out there. As an example, Saco Bay Creamery was a contract zone for three years that they never needed it. When they decided to sell their property, they came back to get rid of the contract zone. Same with the hair salon that's up on, that was up on, on Route One or just out of downtown, yeah, Main Street, Acapella. Same thing. It sat there as a contract zone for a couple of years. She decided to sell it. She wanted to get rid of it. I bet there's 10 more out there that we could clean up. And, or, in addition to that, there are some that didn't do what they were supposed to do, which has been mentioned several times. So let's check that one. And again, I think there's some things that could be cleaned up there, but I do believe it's not something we just want to throw out, because there are times when we do want to increase the density, say, in the downtown, but we don't want to do it downtown-wide. But in this property, or this street, it works really well, for whatever reason. And, you know, we've run into a lot, several times when it's come before us where somebody says, you know, here's something we'd like to do. Well, for example, where we have no, you can't have fast food on Route One. I think we need to fix that part. But I mean, otherwise, we're going to keep getting contract zones for that. Let's just admit what it is and just do it. But I think that there are so many different areas that potential could exist of a business that we didn't know or a use that we didn't anticipate, that a contract zone is a good tool to address that.
Thank you. Any other comments from planning board members? Matt, and then Jen?
Real quick, just to add to what Rob said. I agree with what Rob said. I think the fewer contract zones, the better. And contract zones should be, they should help the city. They shouldn't be because a developer is having a hard time meeting their zoning, or something's difficult with their site. It should be very, very special. That's all. It should benefit the city primarily.
Thank you. Jen?
Yeah, I was going to make a very similar comment to Matt's. And then also, second, the encouragement for an inventory of the existing contract zones, to see if there's any sort of pattern of history for when they were granted or requested, to see if there might be a zoning amendment that could take place to negate the need or to give us the tool that we need to not have to have it fall into contract zone. In terms of enforcement after, I hesitate to be too rigid with enforcement after, because there's circumstances that are often fluid. So maybe just a rigidity on the request to amend the restrictions to happen at an earlier date. So, for example, we heard of the Ecology School asking for an amendment to their, their turning lane, and that was circumstance. You know, nobody knew a pandemic was coming. So, and those kind of things, to make it too rigid that the city is put in a position, or the planning board's put in a position of messing with someone's livelihood or their productivity, that doesn't feel like a good space to exist in. So maybe if there's a checks and balance for enforcement of contract zone that happens with advance enough notice.
So just so everyone's aware, back on August 13th of 2008, there was a prepared contract zone assessment and overview by the Economic Development.
2018, right?
No, thank you, 2018, not 2008. 2018, where it talked about, from Director Clavett, dated August 9th, and it was on the workshop, Item A, for the City Council. And it said, since the city of Saco's zoning ordinance adoption in 1985, 50 contract zone agreements have been developed, with 32 remaining active today. And that was 2018. So obviously, there's been a couple added and a couple removed over the years. But that is online for everyone to look at. Any further?
I've got a question. So if there's 32 active of 50, what's with the rest of them? I mean, we as a planning board can't go out and check them out and say, you know, let's get rid of these. And in some cases, I know there's a fee to eliminate a contract zone. Maybe we waive the fee and just say, bring it on in, and let's get rid of it, if you're not using it.
Well, I think you saw the council remove a contract zone earlier this year from Acapella Salon.
But she had to apply, she had a fee to do that, she had a, and she had an interest. But I'm saying there's, it sounds like there's 10 or 15 that are sitting idle doing nothing. So maybe we contact those individuals that originally got the contract zone. You're not using it, you've not used it, you're past your date, and get it off the books. So we don't all say there's 50 contract zones out there when there's really 32. Right? Just a thought.
Simplify the process. Don't make it so complicated. If you want to dissolve it. If the business is sold, I think you mentioned that in your documents, if it's sold or... It's just done. It's over. You know, don't waste the time of staff and councils have to review those things. Just end it when the business is sold, or if the owner wants to say, hey, we're done, then take it off the books.
Thank you.
I was hoping we could talk a little bit about, like, the process, just briefly. I know there was discussion at your last meeting about amending the process so that contract zones would start almost with like a sketch review with you, with your council before coming back to us. I don't know where we ended up with that discussion. And the board, we haven't had a chance to really weigh in on it yet, but...
The council hasn't changed the ordinance at this time. Counselor Archer?
Mr. Mayor, that may have been me just off, through the phone with you, I believe, when I mentioned, when a contract zone comes to council, I mean, we have the planning board do a significant amount of work before we could say yea or nay. When I had mentioned that, I believe it was in the context of, is there a way that the council can preliminary give a thumbs up, thumbs down, to, one, it could save the applicant some money, do this before they have to drop, is it now $2,000? It's gone up. We just approved it. It's a way to just streamline it. Does it pass, like, the initial interest? And again, I don't know how this would be done through council legislative action or something to that effect. But I don't want all of you to spend hours upon hours to then finally find out it's a no, that could have been a, that's a zero, seven pass, like a fail. That's just, it feels like it wastes the applicant's time, staff time, planning board's time, and council items on the agenda. So I'm not sure if legally it can happen, that you can do a preliminary review, a preliminary heads-up, like a vote to say, let's take it to the next step, or not, because in the end, it is a council action. We just work with you to kind of just make sure all the ducks in a row and that the package comes to us complete. But if the intent of counselors is that they're not really interested, but they want to hear what you have to say, how can we, how can we just get that initial review? Just so you know that council in general is a little interested, we need more information, or we're not interested at all, and that we can allow you to focus on other tasks that are already on your plate.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. I'll repeat what I said a couple of weeks ago. I, in regards to a preliminary thumbs up or thumbs down by the council, I don't think that's a good idea, first of all. First and foremost, I don't see that it's council's place to influence the planning board's decision one way or the other. We perform two different functions. If you review a contract zone and decide to pass a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, I think that should be done without any thoughts of predisposition of the council. That, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think it'll, it would, I think it would create more work for staff, because they're going to have to prep it to some degree for council. And then they're going to have to prep it again, you know, for you folks to review. I said, my biggest concern is I just don't see it as our place to influence your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Purdy. I have deep concerns about a council pre-review. Indeed, it would be hard for me to conceptually approve a contract zone without understanding the scope of the contract, why it exists, what it would achieve, what the specifications were, how it preserved the underlying character of the zone, and what benefits it provided above and beyond that for the city. And if they've already worked out those details, then there's no need for a planning board review. And so, the amount of effort it would take to get me to say yes to the concept is duplicative and repetitive of the planning board's process, and really then supersedes them, and would require work on the applicant to come fully prepared for a presentation in order to, you know, be approved by us, to then go to the planning board, meet a different set of people and a different set of criteria, only then to come back to us a third time, perhaps different. And it seems to me that level of back and forth creates confusion, is developer unfriendly, and would not achieve what we want to achieve. So I have grave concerns about it.
Counselor Hatch?
I'm going to respectfully disagree with the dissenting opinion on the preview step. It's, I think it's been, maybe it's my own fault, but it's misunderstood. The whole intent of that was to simply provide a forum, much like if you take a look at your site plan review, there's a neighborhood meeting required of the developer, during which has nothing to do with council, but just is a vetting of ideas and sharing of thoughts, and no formal decisions are made, no commitments are made. But if it's handled appropriately, that developer can go away from that meeting and constructively consider all of the issues that were discussed, and ultimately decide whether or not they're going to build those into their, their final presentation. That ultimately comes to you folks, as it should. I stress the point of non-binding decision at that level. And the whole idea was to make it more efficient. And the efficiency, I think, comes from an opportunity for the applicant to present before what will ultimately be the deciding body, the thoughts, ideas, no vote, no thumbs up, thumbs down, just a little feedback, so that when they come to you folks, that they have had an opportunity to actually listen to some concerns, bring those concerns into whatever the application is they present to you. And then, I'm just assuming that you're going to be dealing with a much cleaner presentation that would ultimately be somewhat less time-consuming for you. And, you know, I look back and I see many times where you've worked really, really hard to make recommendations on a contract zone, send us a negative, negative recommendation, and we flip it to a positive. And we have the right to do that. I'm not questioning it. But I just think that that initial phase is not the problem that I see. It's just an open conversation with no binding, binding vote. But be that as it may, if the consensus is that that's not a good idea, and it won't save time, then I certainly would be willing to concede. And by the way, this work that I presented, I have no delusions that we're going to improve exactly what I put in here. This was, this was an opportunity for me to get what I think is low-lying fruit in front of this body, both bodies, clean it up, as Rob has suggested. Lots of stuff in this proposal that will clean up, that will, we're dealing with tonight, we have on the agenda, a contract zone agreement dissolution. If the ordinance had dissolution language, would have saved you some time, would have saved us some time, would have been saving time for the property owner. And that's really, really what I had intended to get. So I just wanted to get something, instead of starting from scratch, get it out there, vet it, go through a couple of layers of planning board, workshop, public hearing, council, public hearing. And by the time we all get done, you know, I think we've got a bunch of smart people sitting here. We can all figure this out and clean it up a little bit, and get done with it. It's been a long time. Right, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'll try to be quick. I agree wholeheartedly with what Counselor Hatch has proposed in his amendments that he's presented to council. I think that, you know, some of us have all dealt with contract zones through the years, and oftentimes, I've, you know, watched the planning board process. They've gone in one direction, it comes up to council, and it goes into a different direction. And a lot of it was just poor communication that really, in my opinion, should have started, you know, as been proposed. And I do think it's a little mis, you know, understood. You know, as I've stated before, city of Biddeford does it this way. Freeport does it this way. It literally, in fact, the city of Saco has done it this way. When I was on council, it hasn't been set, you know, in an ordinance, or, you know, that has to be followed. It just occurred this way with convenient MD. It started up at council, came to us, we kind of gave them a green light, then it went to the planning board, then it came back. And, you know, we, at both different stages, we made changes. So it's more of, before even pulling an application and, you know, applying for that contract zone, coming to council, saying, hey, this is what we're looking to do, get a little feedback, and then they, if it's just a flat-out no, which we have seen on both the planning board's side and council, you know, a 7-0, no, we waste everybody's time. And that's not, you know, the norm, but I think often, if we just changed it, tweaked it a little bit, so, you know, the planning board, we weren't wasting their time. I mean, we all know, all you have to do is watch one meeting, you know, more often than not, they go longer than our meetings. So the idea of just filling them up with, you know, contract zones that aren't necessarily desirable, excuse me, you know, to me, seems more efficient, you know, as Counselor Hatch said. And again, we're not reinventing a wheel. City of Biddeford does it this way, and they've done it this way for a long time. So, again, I just support just about every change that has been made to the ordinance that Counselor Hatch has presented. And a lot of that occurred after lengthy conversations about contract zones. So I would look forward to, you know, council and the planning board discussing that more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman, do you have your hand up?
I just maybe wanted to offer the unpopular opinion, that a lot of our discussion has focused around how to make contract zones rare and unusual. And with only 32 active in the city, I think it's a little bit mission accomplished. We have a very small number. We've had only three or four that come up, you know, repeatedly for issues. Largely, I think we've accomplished our goals of making them rare, unusual, and only in extraordinary circumstances.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. No, I agree that there should be language in a contract zone as to the dissolution of it. In fact, for the, under New Business tonight, we've got the contract zone agreement dissolution for 201 North Street. And in that contract zone, it says that at such time as none of the above continue to own the property or the business, this contract will terminate without the express written approval of the city of council, or city of Saco. So, I mean, in this particular case, that was already in the contract zone, which is a good idea, you know, to, I would think, to continue into any possible new contract zones. It also renders our vote, you know, our discussion on this kind of, kind of mute. I certainly don't mind taking a vote on it, just to clean it up and get it off the books, if that's what it takes to do that. That way, we can say there's only 31, or... That way, we can say there's only 31, or whatever number there is. But, thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
I don't want to put words in our chairperson's mouth, but I think you were asking, what's the next step as far as this proposal that we saw from Councilor Hatch? Do you want us to chew on it, come back with some ideas and say, here's what we think? And then, or do we workshop it together later? But do we start by putting our input in from what he's already put forth? And then, number two, yeah, 201 North Street is already dissolved anyways, per the contract zone. So, I'm not sure what you're voting on tonight, but vote negative quick and get it done.
So, I think the council would welcome any suggestions from the planning board on the items or on the language that has been proposed by Councilor Hatch, and then again, it will go through the process at the city level and come back to council at a later date, or it might be a subject of another meeting when we meet again after the summer, as we can continue to workshop this and, as Councilor Hatch said, put all our minds together and come up with one ordinance that makes sense and covers all the goals of the City of Saco. So, I think, did that answer the question?
Kind of. I'm just thinking in terms of like our summer dates and stuff. So, one, is there a way to have that 2018 audit updated so that it's to present date?
City Administrator Canra?
I'd want to check with, you're talking about our financial audit?
No, the, like, the list of contracts zones and what's active and inactive.
Oh, that, yes. I want the city planner to weigh in, but I imagine, I'm not sure of his schedule workload, you know our current staffing situation also, so Jason, if you want to offer something, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I won't put him on the spot tonight, but, okay.
He looks excited to offer something.
Yeah. My hope is that maybe we could update that document to present day and then give our board a chance to really dig into these red lines a little bit more. And then, are you asking us to just submit feedback as we have it essentially to you?
I think we're just putting it out to the planning board and say, what say you as a deliberative body that actually deals with these contract zones more in-depthly than council in most cases? Again, the council wants to hear from you. It doesn't necessarily have to be on Councilor Hatch's proposed language. If you think there's other language that makes more sense, propose it and let the city council look at it and decipher if they'd like to change their, the ordinance. Councilor McPhail.
Right, for example, the preauthorization or the pre-notice, like, coming to council, does, do you feel that would save you time? Do you feel that would be a benefit to you? That would be?
I'm not convinced that it's a strategy that we should be employing right away, and I want to think about that a little bit more.
Right, that would be one of the points, that, yes, let us know how it affects you. Is it a benefit? Is it not? Pros and cons, so that way each item then can be looked at and weighed.
So, I think I'm just trying to gauge timeline. If you guys are okay with us having at least, you know, the month of June to continue to go through this and give some solid feedback, just knowing how we operate and review things on our end, and then maybe we schedule another conversation workshop in the future, once we're ready to talk about it some more.
Council, what say you, is master plan development more important than a contract zone update?
For me, yes.
Councilor Gunn, then Councilor Archer?
I would say as a quick answer, yes, because when I agreed to the de facto moratorium on master plan, obviously, I didn't, I did not intend it to be as long as it would, honestly understood the circumstances, but that being said, I think every day we miss it. We see this development in the Portland Road without any nodes or without any sort of, you know, stringent sort of idea of what we want there. We don't want to see it, as the comments have been made several times tonight, get out of control to the point where it's not aesthetically pleasing to go through my ward though, and I'll defend my ward though, it's not Warren Avenue in Portland, it looks pretty good. That being said, when it comes to the contract zones, to Councilor McPhail's point, I would also piggyback on, I think, something you mentioned, that what type, when it comes to contract zones, what type of enforcement mechanisms do we have to make sure that these people actually live up to their contract zones, perhaps look to tightening the language a little bit? And these are, again, topics that I think it would be prudent for the board to take, the planning board to take a while to look at Councilor Hatch's proposals. What we have talked about tonight in terms of our ideas, sort of, you know, then give us your own three cents when we come back and meet again, and that way would allow us in the autumn, sort of, sit here as a council and basically decide what, if anything, we're going to do with contract zones. As you can see, there is definitely room for consensus up here when it comes to contract zones as they are, whether or not we believe that they have been abused or that they really are a non-issue, but the actual physical way they're, you know, they play out though, there's definitely room for debate on that, and we'd love to see the planning board's input on that because you guys are the experts, that's why we have a planning board. But when it comes, but we can get to that later on, though, I think master plan is something we've waited, the city's waited long enough on, just as a circumstance, and that we'd like to see it taken care of as prudently as possible.
Councilor Archer, then Councilor Purdy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually, with this, I've started to think about which one does council have more leeway on, and it's contract zones. We can literally write whatever we want. Council always goes into executive session, we can add any type of penalty clauses we want, dissolution of the contract, we can do that right now if a contract zone came up to us. With the MPD, we kind of, I feel like that one needs to be prioritized, only because we have all the tools we need. We're looking at something that we can use contract over contract, but if a contract came to us, we can add everything we just added to the contract. There's nothing to prevent us when we make these individual contracts with the applicant. So, I would say prioritize MPD, contract zone, we should get it cleaned up and targeted, and what's the point? What should council look at when they're making their decisions? But for now, we can do whatever we want with the contract zone, so I feel MPD should be the best use of your time at this moment.
Councilor Purdy.
Yeah, I would agree that master plan development should be the priority. As far as contract zones go, it's not like we've got a deluge of applications, and, you know, they can be, you can forward a positive or negative recommendation. If one comes up, that's, you know, that's the way it's always worked and it will work. Yeah, master plan development should definitely be the priority. I would also like to say that, you know, if, agree or disagree with contract zones, a property owner or business owner has got the right to apply for one, you know, whether it's, whether it's approved or not, they've certainly got the right, if they want to, you know, pay the fees and go through the process. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be approved, but they've got the right to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I will weigh in the priority sequence and agree that master plan development should take a priority over contract zones. However, I am familiar with the work that's already been put into that by Mr. Ian, who's here this evening. I think that's also, a lot has been done, a lot needs, more needs to be done, but I think that can be done somewhat expeditiously, and, but I would ask that the contract zones be a close second on that priority list, because I think equally, it is really a low-lying fruit that can really be dealt with rather quickly, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anything else from the planning board? Anything else from the council? Councilor Berman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I didn't make the agenda, but just real quick, you're going to hear from a number of ward four residents in a few minutes during the public hearing regarding the lack of ordinance regarding residential solar projects and the size and scope of them, and they're going to be asking the city to take a comprehensive review of our zoning ordinances in the size and scope and placement of residential solar. I would just encourage you to stick around for a few minutes and hear some of that discussion, as their hope is that they will then come to you for recommendations on zoning ordinance changes.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing nothing further. Planning board, thank you very much for joining us this evening, feel free to stick Okay, thank you very much. Call the meeting of the Saco City Council for Monday, June 6, 2021, to order at 7:50. Let the record reflect that all the city council is present and invite you all to join us on the Pledge of Allegiance. Moving on to item four of the agenda tonight, we have a couple of items under item four. One is to recognize Canine Ranger, who was recognized at Bark in the Park, I was unable to be there, and thank you Deputy Mayor McPhail for stepping in and reading the proclamation. Here we have our proclamation from the City of Saco Office of the Mayor honoring Ranger Stankovitz, whereas Ranger joined the Saco Police Department in 2009 and was teamed with former Corporal Nick Stankovitz throughout his career in Saco, and whereas throughout his career Ranger found lost children, fleeing suspects, excuse me, fleeing suspects and drugs in all types of weather, and whereas Ranger was well-known to local children, giving demonstration at Parks and Rec over the years, where he's remembered fondly as a friendly dog, and whereas Ranger executed his mission as a Saco canine faithfully and retired in 2016 when he was adopted by his longtime handler, Nick, and whereas Ranger passed over the Rainbow Bridge on February 2, 2022, leaving behind his longtime partner and friend, Nick, and his family. Now, therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, may and do hereby proclaim June 6, 2022, as Ranger's Stankovitz Day, signed the 6th of June by myself. At this time, we're going to bring up Nick and his family to hand over this proclamation. Up next, and a last minute add to the agenda this evening, was to further our resolution passed last year for inclusion and diversity, and here is City of Saco Office of the Mayor proclaiming June 2022 Pride Month in Saco. Whereas the City of Saco supports the rights of all persons to coexist with equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas LGBTQ plus, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month is celebrated nationally each year in the month of June, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ plus equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Saco's LGBTQ plus community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, I, Mayor William Doyle, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month in Saco, and encourage residents to reflect upon the continuing struggle for equality by members of the LGBTQ plus community, signed this the 6th of June 2021 by myself. Thank you very much. Under general, that brings us to item five, and that is committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondence to council at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence to council, moving on to item six, public comments, several members of the public have signed up. At this time, I'd like to invite up Bob Molin, Moblin?
Moline.
Oh, I apologize, Moline.
No problem. Thank you. My name is Bob Moline. My wife Pam and I have been residents of Thunder Road in Saco for the last 40 years, and I'm here tonight as a representative of our neighbors in our town to respect the request that the council establish an emergency moratorium on the installation of a pole-mounted solar array system located in a residential area. Now, I submitted the actual document to you guys this morning by email, and also you all have a hard copy, so I don't think it's necessary to go over all the details of that memorandum. What I think is more important is to actually state, why are we coming up here and asking you for this emergency memorandum? Most importantly, you have to realize, none of us are here to be opposed to any solar energy system. That's not what we're talking about, we're actually talking about a specific system. Recently, it came to our attention on our street that one of the neighbors has, is intending to install a pole-mounted solar array system in his front yard. In finding out about this, we started looking at what we thought were the codes might be in the city, and from what I understand, what we all understand, is that there are no specific requirements for solar array systems in the town. For this particular system, what I understand is that they would have to follow the offsets from the street and also have a inspection of their electrical system. What we think is most important and why we're asking for a moratorium is that we hope that the council would act and develop certain requirements so that anybody who wants to install a system, whether it's on the roof or on a pole or on the ground, there would be regulations that they could follow. From what we understand right now is, in this particular case, that the person can install this system to whatever size he wants, whatever he thinks he needs to develop his solar system and to provide his energy, without any requirements from you guys. One of the problems we see with that is that it could affect the neighborhood, not just ours, but anywhere that it's installed. There's lots of reasons that we mentioned in the moratorium, but again, the basic feeling is that we're not against solar energy at all, we all feel that it's necessary. In fact, one of the people who will speak in a minute actually has on his boat a solar system and a wind system on his boat, so it's, we're all in favor of this. What we're actually asking you to do is develop regulations for the installation of any system so that whoever's doing this will have the right proper guidance, and it won't harm the neighbors, in fact. So, again, we respect the request that you provide this emergency moratorium, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Up next is Roland Gagne from 8 Thunder Road, and again, anyone that is going to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roland Gagne, and I live on Thunder Road in Saco. Been a resident, my wife and I, for 46 years. We've got Bob Moline and Pam Beat by a few years. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for giving us the opportunity to address you here this evening. As Bob mentioned, we are not anti-solar, anti-alternative energy, but we're very concerned about a pole-mounted system. We're not talking roof, we're not talking commercial, we're not talking solar farms, but we're talking a polar system that would be placed most likely on this individual's front lawn. And Brad will give us some specifics as to how big that could potentially be. Now, I was looking at your mission statement on the website that says, Saco strives to provide quality of life, and this is what we might be talking about, is quality of life. Because this thing- be talking about, is quality of life. Because this thing has the potential to be a real problem in more ways than one. If you're familiar with our development, it's been there a while. We're very proud of it. And we're afraid that what this thing could do is seriously impinge upon what we have, what we've had, property values, resale value, et cetera. So as Bob said, we're looking for an emergency moratorium. Now, the town of Old Orchard has got a specific ordinance dealing with solar energy. And they address anything from pole-mounted to roof to solar farms. And they've got it spelled out pretty good. I would encourage you to maybe look at that. Because I think this is a wave that's coming to you and maybe the planning board. And bottom line is, I don't know where any of you live, but if you had to wake up in the morning to a 25-foot pole with a bunch of solar panels every day, I don't think you'd be very happy. So I thank you for your time. And I'll pass the ball on to whoever's next.
Up next is Ted Saroyes.
Hi, I'm Ted Saroyes with 38 Summer Street here in Saco. It's hard not to notice the changes at the Gil Patrick House at the corner of Main Street and Summer Street, formerly Acapella Hair Studio. I was here in 2006 when our entire neighborhood was invited to various meetings to discuss Acapella's Contract Zone Agreement to convert this historic house into their business. We were satisfied with Acapella's documented assurance to maintain the property's historic character. The agreement also included maintaining the privacy fencing and that the newly created parking lot would be for business, our use only. We were also under the impression that the property would return to its as-is condition if the business did not work out. The Abuddin Trinity Episcopal Church also agreed to allow stormwater drain to their catch basin in exchange for their parishioners having use of that parking lot. Since that original Contract Zone Agreement of 2006, we see that all those promises have been reversed without any public input that I know of. As part of your packet back in July 12 of 2021, during that city council meeting concerning the Gil Patrick property, there was a letter from the Episcopal Church's attorney concerning the new site plan approved by our former city planner. This approval was declared a minor amendment, so Abuddins, the Historical Preservation Commission, or even the planning board were ever notified of it. As suggested by the church in their letter, I agree that that site plan was approved by bypassing the processes documented in our charter, and that decision must be reversed. The most disturbing part of this amendment is the splitting of the Gil Patrick property in half to cram a new house in our supposed low-density residential and historic district. If that property was returned to its promised original condition, it could be used as a possible elder care facility, bed and breakfast, or other allowable activity for that district. But now, this large structure has been stripped of its parking area, preventing any such future use. Recently, I expressed concerns to code enforcement that the property may be currently used as a business, not allowed in our zoning district. I was also concerned about the alterations being made to the house that may be in violation of our Historic Preservation Commission regulations. I was given a simple response. There are no violations of this property. They couldn't find the time to describe their investigation or quote our zoning laws to assure me that the activities I noted were permissible. It did give me a stern warning about possibly trespassing on private property to provide the pictures I submitted to them. Like many other property owners, we are concerned that our neighborhoods are degrading because our zoning laws are outdated and that key city employees may not know those laws or choose to ignore them. Saco has excellent police, fire, parks, public works, and other departments. But just as important is planning, code enforcement, and our Historic Preservation Committee. They protect the neighborhoods that our houses are located in. Despite the outcome of the lawsuit that's currently going on for the Gil Patrick House, I'm asking tonight, then when I or any citizen bring concerns like this to our city government, we should expect our city officials to alleviate those concerns in a timely and professional manner. City officials should be able to instill confidence by quote-unverbatim from our city charter what activities are or are not allowed. And if our city charter is wholly out of date, especially with the new state laws that have just come our way, I hope that now is the time that we can update it and train the people who will be using it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Brad Goulet.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for allowing us to speak. As you heard, my name is Brad Goulet. I've been a resident of Thunder Road since 1985. Professionally, I manage six hydroelectric stations and previously, when it was operating, a 55-megawatt Cogen plant. So I have a background in renewable energy. I come here to you because I learned recently that my next-door neighbor was going to put up a solar array. And when I went and discussed it with him, looking at the fact that the south end of his house was the gable end, I inquired exactly where he was going to put it. Learned at that point that he was putting up an active xenthing solar array. And he initially said that the array would be 20 kilowatts, which is huge, given that each panel's three feet by five feet, and they average 250 kilowatts. So you're talking a structure on somebody's front lawn that's between 25 feet and 30 feet, 25 wide, 30 tall, or vice versa, on a 16-and-a-half-foot pole. This structure's going to sit on a half-acre lot. And I put in each of your packets what the frame of a 10-kilowatt structure looks like. And I would ask that if you imagine coming out in the morning and seeing that on your neighbor's lawn, wondering what it is as it's moving around to track the sun. Digging in a little bit, we learned that there are no codes regulating these things in the City of Saco. So we came together and proposed this moratorium so that the city would have an opportunity to regulate these prior to somebody being grandfathered and the case being over and nothing that can be done about it. And with that, I would answer any questions, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Up next is David Pollak.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank you for all you do to make Saco a great place to live and work. It's a pleasure living in this town. I'm here today to request the city put into place more developed codes for residential solar projects. Well-developed codes help a community and its citizens have a clear understanding of what is permissible and not permissible in the city, and in effect, help everyone to be good neighbors. I'm a strong believer in the benefits of solar and have solar panels and a wind generator on my boat, and I've had them there for about 10 years. But recent activities have made me aware that basically, other than meeting setbacks, electrical standards, and providing site information, there are a few other requirements in order to request and obtain a permit for residential solar projects. However, there are detailed requirements for commercial solar projects here in Saco. Saco needs stronger codes for residential solar projects, particularly pole-mounted solar installations. My concern is not roof-mounted solar panels, whether they be on the front side or back of someone's Pole-mounted solar installations are a completely different matter, and after spending a few minutes doing Google searches this morning, I determined many cities have detailed regulations on ground-mounted solar panels. For example, all ground-mounted accessory residential solar systems should be located in a rear yard between the primary structure and the rear lot line. No ground-mounted solar installation shall be installed in front yards. When a ground-mounted solar installation is constructed on a lot which adjoins land in the residential zoning district in the city, there shall be additional setback of 70 feet in addition to the minimum side and rear setbacks. Residential minimum setbacks, 50 feet from front side and rear. These are just different cities who have different regulations on this. Maximum height, 15 feet. That includes the top of the solar panel when it's on a tilt, pointing towards the sun. Security parameter fencing along ground-mounted solar installations. Removing trees to install solar technology is generally not recommended. If tree removal is allowed, it's strongly recommended that the replanting of an equivalency of lost trees forage be required in a solar array. He's planning to cut down two 75-foot-tall, beautifully mature trees. All applications should include a plan demonstrating how the proposed ground-mounted solar installation would be incorporated into a local landscape so that effective screening is provided along public ways and abutting views. In other words, so you can't see the panels. We need more regulation in residential solar ordinances. From my reading, if someone has a lot 100 foot wide and respects the 20-foot side setbacks, as long as they're 30 feet back, they could have a 40-to-60-foot-wide solar panel on their front lawn right now in Saco, in a residential neighborhood. While I do not believe this size is under discussion on Thunder Road, we need much stronger regulations in place to regulate ground-mounted solar installations. We should not be in a situation where, because we do not have adequate codes in effect, that we're only left to state the city does not have any standing to deny the project. So Mayor and members of council, I request this evening to institute an emergency moratorium on the installation of pole-mounted solar arrays in residential neighborhoods. This will enable Saco to turn to come up with more adequate regulations. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. That completes the list of folks that have signed up in advance. If there's anyone who would still like to speak to the council, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, council, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. First, speaking as president of Saco Bay. Many of you heard the news that we did get the dredge out. No, didn't get it yet. We got it out to request for a proposal, an RFP. The county did send that out to the world. And I think that is a big step, and partly due to, again, thanking you for approving the setup funds in your budget for the coming year. I also know that the mayor and I think all of council appreciates that the dredge and having control and owning one will be a major tool in your Army Corps negotiations. When I'm talking a few thousand, here we're talking potentially millions of dollars. So I want to just reiterate to thank you for your support as we follow this RFP process to some decisions in July and August. So as just an individual, I wanted to appreciate the planning board and you guys all together meeting on this. Couple of things came up while you were talking about areas of the city. I know Portland, Cascade area was talked about, but don't forget the beach. When we asked for all these funds to save our shores, don't forget that it's not just about saving a few homes, it's about getting generations there down to the beach. And, you know, don't be afraid of commercial development at the pier, some density down there. Maybe the workers can be living there where they're at. Also, the discussion about contract zones and master plan developments, not either or. I mean, I think they kind of work together to the point of certainly don't want to duplicate efforts and not make non-binding. I just want to throw this out there as to the mayor, the mayor's position, not just you being the mayor right now. But I think a lot of us view the mayor as already being the top elected official in the city, is also the welcomeer to the city. You know, when business is open, cut the ribbons at the end. What's to say that you guys can't, whether the contract zones are just economic issues that are not in executive session, what's to say that in a workshop or new business that there's something for the mayor to give recommendations? What he's heard, what people have told him as the mayor? It's non-binding? Maybe he has to be put in the ordinance. I know he doesn't have those duties yet, but what's to say that that can't get on the agenda? And that could help streamline where council wants to go with a vote, what the planning board has heard from council meetings, and what staff will be eventually directed by the city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody coming forward, moving on from public comment to item seven, approval of the minutes for May 2nd, May 9th, and May 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on the minutes? No discussion on the minutes. Roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State law and the city charter and code require redistricting each decade in order that the election wards have roughly equal populations and may not
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the consent agenda. Brings us to item nine, action items. We have item A on page 11 in your packet, a public hearing, amendment to city code, chapter 11, elections, subsection 11, 9, boundary lines. Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State law and the city charter and code require redistricting each decade in order that the election wards have roughly equal populations and may not differ in number of inhabitants by more than 10% of the inhabitants in the smallest district created. The redistricting presented for adoption is based on the 2020 census. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made, but Councilor McPhail to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Hatch to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 8:18 PM. Public hearing is now open. Those wishing to speak on the item amendment to city code, chapter 11, elections, boundary lines, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition. Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule a final reading for June 27, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? I'm closing the public hearing, setting final vote for June 27. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to some concerns I had about the ward redistricting from our last meeting, I had a couple of points I wanted to make. Honestly, they're more -- they're not earth-shattering by any means, though, but we were asked by the city clerk if there was some suggestions that we had, and just looking at the map, just based on this as the one option that we've been given, I had a couple of things come to mind. The three basic ones I have were the splitting of some random neighborhoods. For example, Rosewood Avenue was split between wards one and five, and I didn't think it made much sense in terms of trying to keep neighborhoods in the same ward. I didn't think it was proper to have wards two and four have no changes whatsoever while a couple hundred voters are going to wake up pretty soon and be represented by a counselor that they had no say in one way or the other, so I just want to keep things fair that way. And the third point I had was, again, more semantics than anything else, or statics, I should say, was eliminating part of Ward Three south of Exit 36 Overpass on the west side of Route One, kind of creates this odd bulge of Ward Six into Ward Seven. And again, I'd like to -- like the residents to be able to sort of, you know, cleanly look at the map and have a general idea. If I live on this side, I'm in this ward, I'm in this side and the other, just for ease of the public. But those are my concerns about the actual map. What I really want to talk about, Mr. Mayor and council, is I had a little issue with the process of how this came about, and I just want to, as an example, point to about, I suppose it was about eight months ago at this point, when we had the debate about the new water recovery -- resource recovery department with their new facility down by the river. After months of, you know, going over it, Howard Carter and the staff came to us with three different options of what we could do for a new facility that we, as a council, debated on, voted on, and sent to the voters who ultimately approved the new facility that we're going to have. And I wish, whether or not it's -- has been processed before, nevertheless, I wish that we had had the option as a city, especially since we're not talking about something as integral as, you know, building a facility that handles our wastewater, though. We're looking at a map and sort of like doing the arithmetic of, you know, a couple voters here, a couple voters there. Considering that we had a year to sit on this, I wish that we had had, as a council, at least one other, if not two other options, that we can sort of look at the map, figure out which map makes the most sense for the voters of Saco, and make our decision that way as opposed to being given a single map relatively close to the deadline that we're supposed to have it given to the state, under the idea that if we don't pass the one option that we have, that somehow it's going to trip this mechanism where the city by default goes to at-large voting and no effective wards. As a policymaker, I like having options, and I think the public doesn't understand oftentimes that we're -- as a council, we are designed to be almost a reactionary body, that we let the staff run the city on a day-to-day basis, and we set the policy, but we rely on staff to give us the most options, the most information possible. And this is not a criticism of Michelle Hughes. On the contrary, this city or any other city would be lucky to have her. She is a conscientious public servant, and I've always supported her in her position, and she does a fabulous job. That being said, this is simply a policy and a process difference of opinion that I have, and I don't think when you have -- when you have a public that demands action from the council on things often that we can't change on a flip of a dime, knowing at least that we have options when it comes to the one prerogative that we do have, and that's setting policy, not having the ability to at least go over a couple of different maps. When we're talking about our wards for the next 10 years, these are the people who are going to decide, their school board members and their members of council, and not to have some options. In this day and age, people are very ultra-sensitive about, you know, voter, I guess, elected officials choosing their voters, and I respect that. Although I would point out that we, as about 20, almost 30 years ago, went to a nonpartisan body, so it's not like we're looking for Democratic votes or Republican votes. I mean, we don't run our -- we don't run for office that way. We look for votes, period. So it's a matter of just giving us options so we can -- so the public knows that we have options and that we, you know, can make a decision based on having the ability to make a decision rather than rubber-stamping something that's pretty much forced to us at the last minute. And on the principle of that, that's why I just -- I didn't think this process really works to the city's benefit, and that's my opinion on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing and deciding final rating for the 27th of June? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Council Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1 at 8:25. Up next is item B, a public hearing, one rating, special entertainment permit for Go See Tice BBQ LLC, page 23 in your packet, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tice BBQ LLC, has applied for a renewal of the establishment's special entertainment permit. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, chapter 93, entertainment, section 93.2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. To open the public hearing, the public hearing is now open at 8:26 PM. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, the special entertainment permit for Go See Tice BBQ LLC, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Gunn.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tice BBQ LLC, for a special entertainment permit. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. To open the public hearing, the public hearing is now open at 8:26 PM. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, the special entertainment permit for Go See Tice BBQ LLC, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Gunn.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tice BBQ LLC, for a special entertainment permit. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Council Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Before we move on, Councilor Berman has asked to bring something up, an emergency motion, and now we will hear from Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with the rules and order of business of our council, an emergency moratorium can be made if the conditions merit it and a written notice is provided to the council in advance of the meeting. You all have in front of you a piece of paper that reads establishing an emergency moratorium on the installation of pole-mounted solar arrays located in a residential zone. It establishes the emergency through six points. Whereas the main state legislature is found as in the public interest to develop renewable energy sources and encourages solar energy-related development. And whereas a resident of Thunder Road in Saco has expressed serious interest in the installation of a pole-mounted solar array on their property. And whereas no specific regulation governing the installation of residential pole-mounted solar arrays exists under the City of Saco zoning ordinance. And whereas the city's existing ordinances do not provide an adequate mechanism to regulate and control residential pole-mounted solar array installations and are inadequate to prevent the potential for serious public harm from future establishment of residential pole-mounted solar arrays. And whereas the city needs a reasonable amount of time to study the land use implications of residential pole-mounted solar arrays and to develop reasonable regulations governing their location and operation. And whereas during the period of this moratorium, the city will work on developing appropriate land use regulations concerning residential pole-mounted solar arrays. Therefore, I move that the council, City of Saco council, determine that the circumstances listed above constitute an emergency, and the council act immediately to implement the appropriate regulations and control any further development of residential pole-mounted solar arrays. And during the time this ordinance is in effect, no official, board officer, board body, agency agent, or employee of the City of Saco shall accept, process, or act upon any application for any approval related to the establishment of a residential pole-mounted solar array.
Motion for emergency moratorium has been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Councilor Johnston? Councilor Johnston has a second. Discussion on the emergency moratorium. Councilor Berman and then Councilor Johnston.
Yeah, thank you. I've been corresponding with the residents of Thunder Road for the past week or so. We've heard from many of them tonight. The issue is not in opposition to solar energy, right? Nor is the concern that solar installations may be installed. The concern is that right now, if somebody applies for a pole-mounted solar array, there is very little review or regulation that can be enacted to stop that, right? The installation will be granted approval fairly automatically without further review. That probably will then be grandfathered in, and there is no action this council or any other city officer could take in order to stop that, limited, review it, or otherwise put a pause on that construction. Given that there is such a company coming around doing sales, and there is a resident who wants to install such a project, it's critical that we step in advance of this and allow ordinance to be put in place before the applications are submitted. Once they are submitted and complete, it will be too late for us to take further action. So I recommend approval of this moratorium, enact it for 61 days, and then we can revisit the further need. Moreover, the intent of this moratorium is for pole-mounted solar arrays only, right? So it won't stop any other projects that are currently in process or other houses that are undergoing it, just these pole-mounted solar arrays. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm happy this has come up. This is something that's actually been on my little book of things to accomplish. At first came to my attention the lack of standards when the ecology school built 750 solar panel array without any real approvals outside of pulling an electric permit, which, you know, obviously caused quite a stir out along the Simpson Road. It was at that time that I recognized that while we did create a commercial standard in the ordinance, a personal-use solar array has no limitation whatsoever. So I guess it's fortunate we really have had this come forward because obviously with new laws and the momentum towards solar, this could create quite a bunch of problems. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is putting in an emergency moratorium and taking away all options when we do have in the charter, section 2.10, an emergency ordinance, and it gives the council permission to enact an emergency ordinance while we work on getting this completed, when at that point the ordinance can be repealed. So again, in place of a moratorium, I would suggest if somebody is willing to put forth an ordinance as an emergency, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the way I've read the emergency ordinance, one, I wanted to make sure that this rated to be an emergency, and one of the things that needs to, of several others, is public safety, but it's about property or public peace, so I feel like it relates to both of those. But the emergency ordinance clause would be the moratorium. The moratorium itself is the ordinance that makes it the emergency ordinance. So on that part. The second part is, it's not specifically identified in here, but I want to make it clear, and I hope I don't think in the necessary to amend it, that we're not talking about, as written, if you look at Flag Pond Road in Jenkins, we have several city signs that operate this way. We have stop signs that operate on a very small solar panel. I do not want this to apply to city operations. Does that have to be in a amendment? Because again, I'm literally talking about some of our sidewalks, our pedestrian crosswalks have a solar panel that generates it, the lights for that. So I don't want a pole, and it is on a pole. So again, we don't have clear definitions, so I just want to make sure that this is, the city signs are excluded from this type. I understand the intent is large residential power, but this could prohibit the city from public works installing additional lighting.
Thank you. I think the city, current city infrastructure on the light poles and so forth would be grandfathered from this moratorium.
But any new ones that would come?
Any new ones that would come up would...
And I don't want those to apply. And it's just because it's not clear.
Then perhaps, Council Archer, you should make an amendment to the emergency moratorium.
Could, it'd probably be best to have our public works director help me word this amendment so it doesn't affect his operations.
Before we do that, let's hear from City Administrator Kenrath.
I was just gonna say, just in my reading of this, it's pretty clear that it talks about residential pole-mounted arrays. So I don't think, you know, anything with public works might use as a residential pole-mounted array.
Okay. I'll accept that. Again, we got this -- I got this this afternoon, so I didn't get a lot of time to review, but I do see that. So as long as that's the intent, I'm cool.
Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're literally reacting to what a single property owner was going to do on their property, I'd like to think this person doesn't live in a vacuum. I mean, it would be nice to if they had been here tonight, though, to sort of, as a alpha rebuttal to the residents who came to speak against it. Surely, they can't live in a bubble, and they must appreciate that in this day and age, that anytime you have anything regarding solar panel, solar power, solar installations on forward-facing property, that the first thing anyone's going to mention is property values. Has, did anyone from the city or the council actually bother speaking, reaching out to this individual? Do we know why they felt compelled to put it on their front lawn, which needless to say, in our community like ours, was going to, unless you weren't paying attention for the last 100 years, cause a stink? I mean, does, do we know what the reason why this person was going to put one on their front lawn to begin with?
City Administrator Kenrath, has anyone from the city reached out to the individual that's considering, that's considering putting a solar array?
No, I mean, this has been late-breaking as of today. I meant, I defer to Councilor Berman if he has, is that specific discussions or some of maybe the neighbors who may have spoken directly to the property owner, if they might have further information?
So I would, Councilor Berman, have you?
I have not spoken directly to the property owner.
Mr. Mayor, could that gentleman over there, if he has information?
Any other questions before we hear from neighbors? Because this is not a public hearing. So at this point, I invite Mr. Pollock to come up if he's had direct contact with the neighbor in question.
I have not had direct contact with the neighbor. However, he did write an email to a number of the residents where he met with the code. Officer came over, enforcement officer, came over to his house on Friday, and he's got a house that's not well-suited to solar because it doesn't face in the right direction. There's a lot of trees around his property. But he wrote us all, the owner wrote us all an email over the weekend basically saying he sympathizes with his issues, but basically the city laws permit him to do what he wants to do, and he's going to look at other options, but he doesn't state that he will not go forward with this option because he's permitted to do so with this option. And this is the problem we have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up Code Enforcement Officer Dave Tumi. Dave, thank you very much. Has the Code Enforcement Office had direct contact with the person considering putting a solar panel on their, or solar array, excuse me, on their...
Don Fiss met with him last Friday.
And is it currently allowed in the zoning ordinance or in the rules and regulations or policies of the city?
Yes.
Questions from council? Council McPhail?
Correct me if I'm wrong, and it might just be a definition of terms here, but as Council Archer stated, moratorium is ceasing all activity. An ordinance is creating codes and guidelines, so an emergency ordinance is not the same as an emergency moratorium based on charter.
So in the past, you may remember that we did this with medical marijuana years ago where we created an emergency ordinance at the same time as a moratorium went in place to allow city staff to work on that ordinance. And then that was enacted for several years and then, and then went away.
Right.
That would be...
Right, but it's not the same thing. So if, putting a moratorium would be ceasing
If we don't have any ordinances in place, put together a quick, so that this person has the opportunity to follow guidelines, and we can, based on the gentleman that presented some examples of what other areas are doing, I don't, not having something in place should not be faulted to just say, nope, because it's not going to look good.
Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you. I have two responses to things that I've heard so far, and I'd be curious to hear from the Code Enforcement Officer also. One is, although this is, emergency moratorium is certainly in response to one project, in the two years I've been on council, we've voted on two other emergency moratoriums. One on medical cannabis, that was in response to one business, and one on contract zones that was in response to one project. We enact emergencies when there's one new project that violates our current understanding, or takes advantage of loopholes in our current zoning, that's contrary to the city's best interest, as I would submit that this project is too. That's the purpose of emergency moratoriums. Certainly, an ordinance would be better, right? And what we want to provide is guidelines for solar projects. What we're providing is guidance as to what's acceptable for a city to be effective and to fit in with the neighborhood, and not change the general characteristic of the neighborhood. The issue is that if the applications go in tomorrow, and my understanding is the tree-cutting trucks installation equipment have already arrived once and been turned around for the lack of a permit, but a permit is in the process of being acquired, it will be too late. And so the purpose of the emergency moratorium is to allow information about an ordinance to be presented to us, that we could then pass at a future date. And I'd be curious, I guess, whether, I don't know if that's the Code Enforcement Office, or the Planning Office, but how long it would take to come up with some emergency ordinance providing better guidelines?
That'd be a question for the planner. We just enforce the codes and ordinances, they write them.
All right.
Thank you. Administrator Kenrath, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, thank you. I think we get City Solicitor Murphy on it in short order, and, you know, I'll just, again, state that this is a tool and a mechanism that, you know, municipalities use, as Councilor Berman just laid out, to give us time to develop and craft that emergency ordinance. Moratorium is necessary if there could be an application that hits tomorrow. So that's the point, I think, of this, this moratorium. But I think we could certainly move on sooner rather than later with our city attorney, planning codes, myself, all of us together, and get something in the works.
Councilor Johnston.
Yeah, so, I mean, I go back to the comments that this is, you know, just in reaction to one individual, and while it may seem that way, it certainly isn't where I'm coming from. My issue is, you know, as I've said, I've been aware that we've been without standards. We simply have a definition in the zoning ordinance. If I were to go apply, I just get an electrical permit, and potentially a building permit, and I'm good. There's no, there's nothing for code to enforce. So, I mean, I guess, we do have something, which is the definition. So you could, if the concern is, you know, there's not an ordinance on record, well, technically, there's a definition. You could, if you wanted, just suspend all permits for residential solar. I'm not advocating for that, because I think this is a cleaner process. But, I mean, I would hope we could come up with a, you know, a new ordinance, as has been mentioned. Old Orchard Beach has one, several other communities have, you know, one. So hopefully, within 60 days, we could, you know, take care of this. But I think any of us, you know, obviously, their situation cropped up, but I myself was envisioning this back, as I said, when the ecology school put up 750 panels. I was thinking to myself, wow, this could be really impactful throughout all of Saco if you have absolutely no standards. So it's definitely something that I view as an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to Councilor Berman and Councilor Johnson's comments, I didn't mean to discount the need or the interest in going after this moratorium, or urgency ordinance, to whatever the form it is, though. I'm just, I'm just making the philosophical point that if I'm going to be asked to basically tell a property owner who has a legal right to do something right now, that tomorrow, for all the money and time they've put into it, you can't do it, because we decided, at least I have all the facts going into it, though. I mean, how am I, how is it making a fair decision if five people come up and say they don't like something's going on, and I don't get at least a rebuttal from the person doing it? At the same time, looking at the particulars of it, in this emergency ordinance, I have been moved to understand the concern, so I'm not discounting it whatsoever. I'm just saying, my approach to it, though, is I'm, you know, I, you know, members of this body often talk about process, and, you know, process is important, though, and there's two sides out there, and I'd like to at least hear from both, if I, if I can, before I make a decision that impedes one person's private property rights. But if the other, if one of those parties decides not to show up, then that's their prerogative, and it may influence decision one way or the other. I'm just putting that out there. When it comes to the substance of it, the moratorium does make sense, you know, a temporary emergency moratorium does make sense, because, like I said, it'll give planning staff, if it is a priority, if it's made a priority, time to actually come up with some sort of standards for a pole-mounted thing, though. I mean, I just don't want to see this sort of kick down the, kick down, you know, the way, though, when especially it relates to just a single type of solar array, although I would be open if 60 days pass, and planning needs more time, they really want to examine the entirety of our solar regulations. I mean, you know, but better to do it all at once, than I suppose, and do it piecemeal. It means waiting longer, so be it, though. But as a moratorium at the moment, unless we can come up with other language or an ordinance, I think is a prudent idea.
Thank you. Any further, Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I, just for a point of clarity, is this, can we assume, or is it a fact, that our legal counsel drafted this document? So who prepared the document?
The group of neighbors prepared the document.
And has Attorney Murphy reviewed it?
City Administrator Kenrath, has Attorney Murphy reviewed this draft moratorium?
No, and as it was stated, this was late-breaking, just as of today, this happened. So, no, it has not been reviewed by our city attorney.
All right. So I just bring that forward. I'm, I'm in support of the concept here, but I'm just trying to manage our risks here, and I'm not sure if that's problematic or not, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues to decide.
Any further discussion on this item? Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Councilor Hatch's concerns, you'll have to forgive me, I don't have the charter in front of me. When it comes to emergency moratoriums, would it be conceivable to do 30 days rather than 60? I mean, if it's a legal issue, and given the lack that the council doesn't meet as frequently during the summertime, I don't want to cause an undue burden on the property owner. If we don't, if they don't have an answer one way or the other, could we perhaps do a 30-day rather than a 60? And, you know, to get some clarity on the issue.
I think what could happen, Councilor Gunn, is City Attorney Murph, City Solicitor Murphy could look at this, following enactment or not by the council, and if need so, a emergency meeting could be called to deal with the issue, and then repeal it or enact it, if that's the will of the body. Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I recognize that our city attorney hasn't drafted this. I've voted on a few more emergency moratoriums over the last five years. Recognizing we have the ability to repeal this moratorium, I'm comfortable, as written, it's overall well-written. Again, I had some concerns, they, it's mostly because I didn't have a lot of time to review it myself, but looking at it with a fresh eye, again, I'm comfortable for the traditional 60 days. If the attorney, our attorney comes back to us, says, hey, we have to change our mind real quick, we have to fix this, I'm comfortable with an emergency meeting to get this fixed. But as written, I'm comfortable with this, and I'm the one that usually has a high scrutiny, as you all know. So I'm, I will be supporting this, as written. Or technically, it was presented by Councilor Burnham. Even though it was drafted by someone else, it was Councilor Burnham who presented it. So I'm supporting his moratorium request.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item, emergency moratorium, on the installation of pole-mounted solar arrays located in residential zones? Seeing no further discussion on this item, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
No.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1. That brings us to item C, a first reading, Chapter 168 updates, on page 25 in your packet. Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council updated, Council updated Chapter 168 during a final reading on December 13th, 2021, adding multiple amendments on the floor. The Codes Department, along with City Solicitor Tim Murphy, have noted a few minor items that were not captured in December. Attorney Tim Murphy, does our view that the edits accurately reflect the intentions... Does our view that these edits accurately reflect the intentions and vote of the city council from an earlier meeting? The requested changes were sought by Councilor Berman, however, they were not put in the text, even though the intentions as to them were expressed and were voted upon. As you may know, the city's official codekeeper cannot rely upon intentions, nor can they rely upon their own, nor can they on their own add omitted verbiage, or changes that were not made at the hearing by strikes and additions. In addition, the only way to properly capture into the code the amendments the council wanted is to re-adopt them. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of Chapter 168, and set a public hearing date for June 27th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item D, a first reading on page 27 in your packet, and has petition for a zoning map amendment to rezone Four Woodman Avenue from Portland Road or the PR zone to medium-density residential, MDR zone, and that is Councilor Purdy.
Thank you. My petition, Patrick and Veronica Lobby, request the city consider amending the zoning map to rezone Four Woodman Ave., map 35, Lot 16, Sub Lot 1, from the Portland Road Zone to the medium-density residential zone. The subject property abuts an MDR district. The planning board voted 7-0 to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their April 26th meeting. As discussed during the May 16th council meeting, two other Woodman Ave. parcels are similarly residential in character and in the PR zoning district. City council is authorized to amend the zoning map in accordance with city policies, and may include these properties in this amendment, if appropriate. Staff confirmed that the Caldwell's owners of, owners of nine Woodman Ave., that's map 35, Lot 23, do not have any issues with the potential rezone of the property. Several attempts to contact the latenders owners of 13 Woodman Ave., that's map 35, Lot 21, Sub Lot 1, have not yielded a response. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the proposed zoning map amendment for the property identified as map 35, Lot 16, Sub Lot 1, and set a public hearing for June 27th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call on a first reading. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item E, one reading amendment to the employee handbook, on page 28 in the packet. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. In 2021, we updated our employee handbook to encompass policies for the non-union personnel policy and prior employee handbook, create a single document that align appropriate policies citywide, which was also focused during union negotiations. The proposed amendments in the exhibit item below provide clarity for existing policies and account for benefit changes. Staff supports the adoption of the proposed employee handbook amendments. Be it ordered that the city council adopt the City of Saco Employee Handbook dated 6-1, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item F, one reading curbside solid waste collection contract, three-year extension, on page 106 in your packet, and that is Councilor Purdy.
Thank you. I'm scrolling to it. The curbside municipal solid waste, MSW, and recycling collection contract with Pine Tree Waste expires on June 30th, 2022. Public Works has negotiated a potential three-year contract extension with Pine Tree Waste for a year-one market adjustment of 8%, with flat rate increases of 5% per year for the remaining two years. Due to current fuel cost variability, there is a fuel surcharge provision where the costs, when the cost of diesel is over $6 per gallon. Be it ordered that the city council approve a three-year extension to the current curbside solid waste collection contract. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston, to curb, to approve the curbside solid waste collection contract for three years. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item G, a final reading, Chapter 186, addressing standards, on page 118. Councilor Johnston.
I'm scrolling. The City of Saco assigns residential and commercial addresses to structures in the city, where it is a responsibility of the city to protect the lives and property of the residents. It is desire of the city to operate efficient and effective public safety services where these efficient and effective public safety operations are inhibited by the current inconsistent street numbering process. The updated ordinance will give clear guidance on addressing, renaming, or readdressing of streets, as there are a number of duplicate road names and addresses across the city which have life safety impacts. Staff recommends approval. The City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the second and final reading of Chapter 186, addressing standards revisions.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy, discussion? Deputy Chief Hunter, could you approach? Thank you. In light of several emails I've received, and I'm sure the council has received just as many, if not more, in certain areas, just as the city council considers approving this, we just want to reiterate to the public and let them know that before any changes are made, there will be effective reach-out and public notice to them prior to any implementation of changes of naming streets.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. Before any changes would take place, there would be notifications to every butter on that street, giving them more than enough notice that the renaming was, would be taking place. We'd also be holding a neighborhood meeting to make sure we've met with all the residents in order to get their input, and also to solicit their input in what they would like to see for their road name be done. This is in a one-and-done type of thing. This is several ongoing meetings over a period of time before we come to a final resolution of what a road name would be agreed upon, and then for that to be put in place.
Thank you, just for the reiteration and reassurances, I know you said it at the last meeting.
Absolutely.
Any question? Councilor Berman?
Sure, and again, I think this has been brought up before, but many of the emails I've received have asked, why this street and not this street? And make some rationale, why, say, it should be Beach Street rather than Beach Lane, whose name has changed. Would there be a process for reevaluating which of the two streets in a similarly named road, or is it always going to be the one that affects the least number of people?
So what we looked at is, we took from the assessing department, where are the duplicate road names? And then initially, we looked at what are the least amount of impacts on that street, you know, the residences? If you took Lincoln Road, Lincoln Street, and you look at those, and which one would have more impact? have more impact? Or even better yet, look at Main Ave. and Main Street, which one would have the less impact? Main Ave. and Camp Ellis would have a less of an impact than renaming and renumbering all of Main Street. So that's what we looked at initially, but anything would be open for discussion on that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. At the last meeting, I asked if consideration would be given to Paper Streets, and I don't see that addressed here, and I'm assuming that Paper Streets can probably fit under the heading of private, existing private ways, but I just want to, and Paper Streets, you know, if there are buildings on them, just to kind of keep that on the radar screen, and if you, if you think that you need to come back and make a slight modification, I don't want to hold up the works tonight, but I just want to get that out there to constituent that express some concerns, and, and another constituent had a really good story, she was excited about having her street renamed and actually had a suggestion, and I, I sent her to you, so I hope she's, she's contacted you. So there is some excitement in this.
We, we have had at least one street where the residents have reached out with a new road name that they would like to see put in place, but yes, we would consider the Paper Streets to make sure we have no duplicates in those. I know the last time Fire Lanes got brought up, we've already renamed all the Fire Lanes and don't have Fire Lanes in the city, and those residents have already weighed in and given their road names in place.
Any further questions? Deputy Chief Hunter, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, if there's no further discussion on this item, a roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us, that concludes the action items this evening, brings us to Item 10, which is new business, on page 127 in the packet, is Item A, a contract zone agreement dissolution of 201 North Street, and that is assigned to Counselor Purdy. I believe Planner Gardner will come up and give us a general overview presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Good evening, councilors. So as it came up earlier this evening, what you have before you is a petition to dissolve the current contract zone agreement, which applies to the property at 201 North Street. That was originally authorized in 1997, and amended in 2007 to allow auto sales and repair, pardon the typo in the memo, on the subject property that is in a residential zoning district. Terms of the agreement specify that a change in ownership terminates the agreement, and we have purchase and sale agreement and deed that provides evidence that the property has sold, and is now the subject of subdivision and site plan applications for residential development. So I'm of the opinion that you do not need to dissolve this contract zone agreement through your multi-step legislative process, however, I do, I think we would be remiss if we did not bring it to you as an advisory note to answer any questions, and of course, if you disagree and choose to pursue the multi-step process, then the applicant will certainly want to make sure that this is dissolved correctly. So, happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. Is there any objection to this being a consent agenda dissolution at the next council meeting on the 27th? If there's no objection, we'll put it on the agenda for such. Counselor Purdy?
I have no objection. Is it possible to just make a motion and dispense with this tonight, where, I mean, technically, the, the contract zone is already, already terminated?
I believe where it is on the agenda, and it is an, it is on, on an agenda and an official meeting, you could take action tonight, but I would caution you strongly to just put it as a consent item in the next agenda.
That's fine.
Counselor Berman?
I'm concerned about voting on something when there's really nothing to vote on, as for the consent agenda item, could we acknowledge the dissolution as opposed to vote to dissolve it, since it's a self-dissolving contract at this stage?
The, the language will be drafted for you in a, and for the packet, really, because you will be voting on a consent item with probably some other items.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Counsel Archer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I actually agree with you, your statement on that, where it's the acknowledgement, so think if someone had resigned from a position, from a board, they make the official resignation, but we still, we still recognize it, just saying, yes, we accept that they resigned. So I'm kind of thinking in that realm is how to approach this. Consent, I don't see a need to speak on it, but pretty much for all future, I, I think that would be a good process in order to do it, just so that there's public acknowledgement that we're aware, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
No, I just piggyback on what everybody said, though, it's, basically, it's almost a redundancy, just to make sure that our i's and t's are crossed and dotted, though, but at the same time, for our earlier discussion with the planning board, if at some point that we as a council can basically amend the ordinance, though, so the language is clear, I mean, the language that just happens to be in this contract zone is de facto in all of our pre, contract zones going forward, so we never have to even waste the council's time on discussing something that's already, ipse post facto, I know my Latin teacher will probably kill me on that one, because I got it wrong, though, but no reason to do it, though, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion on this item, you'll see it as a consent agenda in the next, next meeting. With that, we move to Item B, an amendment to Section 7.1 of the Saco zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units, page 165 in your packet, assigned to Counselor Purdy. And Director Gunn, will you be presenting on this item?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. So, Saco zoning ordinance does already contain provisions for, which both encourage and for permitting and design of accessory dwelling units, often known as mother-in-law units. This is a housing type that is widely encouraged by comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances as a way of meeting the affordability and housing typology needs of changing population. The current accessory dwelling unit regulations require fire sprinklers to be installed in all new units. Accessory dwelling units are essentially two different physical types, one is detached ADUs, they're called, which are buildings that are separate from the main unit, usually a house, and some are attached or built within an existing or under-construction residence. What city staff learned from the state Fire Marshal's office is that by requiring sprinklers to be installed in an attached dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, the state Fire Marshal's office thereby also requires that the entire residence that the unit would be built within or attached to also be provided with fire sprinklers, and staff have found that that requirement has discouraged a number of potential applicants from constructing ADUs on their property. And so, the purpose of this amendment was to eliminate the fire sprinkler requirement from attached accessory dwelling units. Sprinklers will still be required in detached accessory dwelling units and in attached accessory dwelling units that are constructed as part of new houses. Any questions on that so far?
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question is, you've got the state fires marshal saying you have to, what gives us the power to countermand them, I guess?
Our fire department staff have indicated that if the sprinklers are not required in the attached units, then they thereby wouldn't be required in the rest of the house by the Fire Marshal's office. Basically, the Fire Marshal's office simply has an all-or-nothing policy with regards to...
But they don't require systems in ADU necessarily?
No.
Okay, so that's how we're countermanding it, is by, okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it was just, how are we countermanding an order, but if, all-or-nothing, as I saw you wrote, okay.
I think we can all agree that in the long run, there, from a safety standpoint, there is some desirability to having sprinklers in pretty much all occupied buildings, however, there are, of course, costs to requiring that, and in balancing that with our goals that encourage development of this housing type, and the dire needs for housing in, in the community, I, I think, as staff, both myself and the Code Enforcement Office Director and the Deputy Fire Chief, all agree that this is a, this, this is an amendment that we recommend for the, for the interim.
Any further questions on this item? Seeing no further questions, Counsel Purdy, are you willing to be the liaison for this item?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item C, MS4 general permit and stormwater regulation, regulation presentation, page 168 in your packet, I think we, we'll hear from Charles Laveria, city engineer, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Some of you have seen me here before, it's been a few years, I think, since we've done this with the council, we've done it with other planning board, I think we did it also with a few other boards, and we, we have a requirement through our MS4 permit to do annually outreach and awareness of what the MS4 program is, so tonight, it's a simple thing for you guys, in some sense, I'm not here to, I'm not looking for anything from you, so that's good, you get to relax a little bit tonight, this is not stressful. The MS4 permit is about stormwater, so it's a dirty little thing, I guess, that we all have to do our better job of keeping our waters clean and how we discharge to the waters of the US. The MS4 permit, the city is subject to, along with a number of other communities around the greater Portland area, and there are a few cells around the state that, that are also subject to it, but the one that we're in is around the Portland area. And it's a general permit, it's issued every five years is the terms of the permit. The last one was, took effect in 2008, so, you know, if you did your math, you might say, wait a second, you just told me five years, and that was more than five years. The new permit that we will take, that will start to take effect on July 1 of 2022, took us four years to get through the negotiations for. So, as you can probably sense from that, it was a little contentious about what the requirements are, or what the added requirements are to the city, or any municipality that is subject to it. So suffice to say, the restrictions aren't getting less, they're getting more. So each permit cycle, we start with what we had for the last permit, and then we, we tend to get a little bit more of a requirements asked of us. And that's not, that's true here as well, the, but the MS4 permit, again, is, consists of, I've listed them for you in this memo, but it, there's six minimum control measures, and some of them are things like, again, public awareness, outreach, illicit discharge detection, which is, you know, people that are discharging something into our stormwater that isn't just plain stormwater. It's also oversight on construction activities, so that's like erosion control, turbid discharges into water, say. Then there's the post-construction, so that's after somebody builds something, you know, that they're maintaining it, and that it's functioning properly and, and operating as we all would like things to do. And then the last one really has to do about city facilities, but it's good housekeeping on our own facilities, and a lot of that has to do with maintaining streets and catch basins and whatnot. So the MS4 permit doesn't really apply over the entire city, although we pretty well treat everything the same, but I gave you a map as well, it does give you the limits of what the urbanized areas, and that's defined out of the census, so, and that changes, it didn't change yet this, for the latest census, but, so you'll see on the highlighted area of the city, it's the most, it's the urbanized area, it makes sense, it's where our population densities are, that area is subject to the MS4 as well as the Goose Fairbrook watershed, so that's what the city identified as our priority watershed, and we apply the MS4 rules to those areas as well. The, I gave you a little bit of statistics, some of the things that what Public Works does, or other departments do in town, the majority of the MS4 falls to Public Works, there's no doubt about it, in terms of what we do to clean and maintain things. Police and fire also assist as well, when they're doing accidents on cleanup afterwards and any spills like that, so there are great assistance there. Code certainly is as well, in terms of anything that happens on private property, particularly, again, some of the erosion issues, they're, they're the main arm of enforcement for the city, so they're my, my help when things get dire, and I need someone to come in with the big stick, that's Code's for me. Parks and Rec also, so pretty much every department is involved, planning as well, so it's a multifaceted kind of effort on the city side. We review outfalls, we do inspections of those outfalls, we're tracking, again, looking for any discharges that come to us that have a way of impacting stormwater, so, again, it's, it's not an easy, simple task sometimes, as you can imagine, something that finds its way into a storm drain system, you know, a half a mile from its outfall is not easy to find. So again, that's, but that's what we're after, that's what we're trying to do. Some of the things that are coming out of the new permit, which, again, will take effect on July 1, we have expanded requirements for sampling, so, at our outfall locations, so again, if we go there during a dry event, or during a period of dry weather, you would expect an outfall to be having no discharge. If we have a discharge, we're required now to sample that, we haven't been for a while, but that officially takes effect in this permit, and then if we find anything that's non-stormwater related, again, we have to start tracking, chasing it back to try to find the source. We also have a couple of things that we, one of them, we did, when the city redid the ordinances the last year or so, we included some updates for erosion control, that was kind of being preemptive, because under the new MS4 permit, we have to enact some updated erosion control language by July 1 of 2023, so we took, made that current in Saco about a year ago, so we kind of covered that already. You will see, I would say, in the next year or so, we also have a requirement to implement some low-impact development standards in our ordinance as well, and that is required by the MS4 to be in place by July 1 of 2024, so we are, had a fair amount of debate about that in the last few months, and I think we will have some more for sure on that, that will not be an easy topic to conquer. And the, the other thing that we are doing out of, out of the MS4 this time, out of the permit, is in our priority watershed, we have been, we are now implementing three specific BMPs that are targeting the stressors on the Goose Fairbrook, so for us, it's like a, one of them is a chloride reduction effort, there's another one about, again, the increased public awareness for pet waste and other sources of pollutant that gets into it, and then we're also implementing a, specifically a structural BMP, so a stormwater BMP will be being done in Goose Fairbrook as a result of that. So, I just, again, this is a chance for me to make you aware of what the MS4 permit is, I know it's not the most exciting topic, but I also, if I can answer any of your questions, either tonight or anytime, feel free to reach out to me, and I will do my best. And that is all I have for you.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
That brings us to Item D, a Buxton Road sewer force main and main turnpike authorities exit 35 and 36 interchange improvements project, and that is page 173 in the packet, and I believe we'll be hearing from Director Howard Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this project's pretty self-explanatory, we know they're adding an exit there, so that's requiring us to, to encase the force main right now, plus they're going to put like 12 to 17 feet of fill on it, we don't think it's going to survive, so, I think the turnpike's going to... So I think the turnpike's going up for an RFP for contractors late this summer and could start construction this fall, possibly next year. So I guess the question to you folks is, how do we want to pay for this? Do we really think this should fall on the sewer users to move this, or is this more of a community-type budget item? I guess that's what's up for debate, I guess. But we're projecting about probably a quarter million dollars into this project, so.
So for the council, there, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000 to improve this sewer main.
Right, that's, that's an estimate. It could go one way or the other a little bit.
Any question? Councilor Johnston, then Councilor Archer, Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. How long is this section?
Oh.
You have the little map, is that?
Well, Joe would know more than I would if he's still here. 500 feet.
That's right in the area that they're going to put the ramp.
Right, so you see the old Public Works garage there. So we'd actually border the turnpike from there over to where that house is down over the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'd move it 10 feet or so to the north. You know, we don't want to be 20 years from now, let thing down 17 feet and it leaks, so I don't think we want to take that chance, so. And we will upsize it just for future growth. So I could see some impact to the users there, but certainly not enough to pay for $250,000. I'll leave it up to you folks. If you want to take it out of user fees, we can, but.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the reason, I mean, obviously, we're digging this up, so that's why you're going to the 10-inch versus the 8-inch.
Right.
We're not going past this.
No.
It's just the anticipation, years from now.
Right.
We'd add another 10-inch.
Right, yeah, we could go to Loud Road in 20 years, who knows, so.
Councilor Archer.
Yeah, is there any way to connect this to the turnpike construction project?
No.
No, not at all? Or the, or the Jenkins Road, or even the school? Is there a way to connect this to any of those three other projects we already have on the books?
In what way, Council? You've kind of lost me.
Well, one, it sounds like you have to upgrade for future usage, and if you have, if you were to have a school system out there, that would be one, if.
Yeah, I can see where you're going to that, sure, yeah.
Again, I don't know how to connect it to this traffic light.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just trying to see, is there any way we can connect it to our funding source that already exists?
Well, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. But this is something we're going to have to do probably this summer or early fall, so.
Any further discussion on this? So, Council, how do we want to move forward with the, with paying for this item? As Director Carter stated, it can be put onto user fees for the folks that are using the water and sewer, or the city can look to fund it in another source. Councilor Berman.
I mean, the item says a decision doesn't get made tonight. Presumably, it'll come back up as a budget amendment.
Right.
At a future meeting where our decision can change. But my two cents is, is the item before council, could be one, or it goes into the undesignated fund or general budget, and we could start there.
Thank you.
Yeah, if there's, if there's any general consensus, well, we're the next council budget amendment around that, around that item, so.
Councilor Johnston.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilor Berman. I don't think, given the 20% increase user fees just, this makes much sense adding to it, so I'd say the unassigned fund balance.
Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I would throw my support with Councilor Berman and Councilor Johnson on that, on that approach.
Okay. Director Carter, I think there's some consensus on the, on the council to move forward out of the general fund.
General fund, okay. Thank you very much. That's why we'll write it up for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm going to stay right up here.
That brings us to Item E, a council resolution, TIF funding for Saco's full-water resource recovery facility upgrade on page 175. Let me back up. Is there a councilor that is willing to be the council liaison for Item D? Councilor Johnston. Thank you.
So basically, this is a non-binding resolution, and it goes around, around the bond question, and we've run this through Denise, it's gone through the TIF council, it's been reviewed by Attorney Tim Murphy. All seems in order. It's just for going forward in future councils, four or five years from now, 10 years from now, if they want to start moving those TIF funds somewhere else, at least we have some kind of resolution that we have, how we're going to pay for this thing for the next 25 years. Again, it's non-binding, but it's, I think it's something worth putting on the books via consideration, so.
Any questions on this non-binding resolution?
No question, I just, I would support it. I like the idea of historical knowledge to pass on to future councilors.
Thank you. Councilor McPhail, are you willing to be the liaison as the economic development? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? See no further discussion, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
That concludes new business and brings us to Item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Kenrath.
Thank you. Reminder, June 14th, next Tuesday, is primary election day. All wards will vote at Thornton Academy on election day. The last day to vote in person absentee at City Hall will be Thursday, June 9. This day will also have extended hours from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And of course, a ballot drop box is also located on the Cuts Avenue side of City Hall for voters to drop their ballots off there. Our next agenda, June 27th, will include a joint meeting with the school board, ward boundary lines, a final reading, chapter 168 will be in public hearing, we'll have a presentation from our auditors, RKO. It will be a finance department budget, ADU sprinkle requirements first reading, Buxton Road sewer line move first reading, dissolve the 201 North Street we just talked about, that was scheduled for first reading. There'll be tentatively an executive session also scheduled. I'd like to welcome several new staff members to the city's team, Marissa Bacon, one of our new finance customer service representatives, and also Donna Barnes, a new finance customer service rep. So welcome to both of them. Then Alex Saint-Sir is our new part-time communications coordinator. We wish them all great success for many years to come here with the city of Saco. Promotions, we've had three members of Saco PD be promoted to the rank of sergeant, Dan Bowyer, Monica Fahy, and Matt Roberts, who are all recently promoted to sergeant. So congratulations to the three of them, and we thank them for all of their years of service so far, and of course, look forward to the years ahead. We have a city RFP opportunity. The city of Saco seeks proposals from investment advisors for portfolio management services. The city is looking to increase interest earnings on its considerable cash balance in order to offset the tax appropriation. Proposals will be accepted until July 1st, July 1st, 2022, at 11:00 AM. Please email those to our finance director, Glenis Solis, at gsolis@saco main.org. Lastly, an update on our beaches. We are having, like many communities around the state and the country, a shortage of lifeguards. And so due to that, Bayview Beach guarded hours will be curtailed slightly this year. It'll be guarded Monday through Thursday. And the first day they'll be out there is June 18th. Reminder, all dogs need to be leashed on city beaches from April 1st to September 30th. And lastly, beach passes are available, they're $25, and the easiest way to do it is just to go online, sacomaine.org/parking. And we wish everyone a happy and fun summer. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Any questions? Seeing no questions, that brings us to Item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Seeing no council discussion and comment this evening, moving on to Item 13, executive sessions, our motion to enter executive session. Councilor Berman.
Sure. Be it ordered at the city council entering into executive session pursuant to MRSA, Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, for D, city administrators' contract negotiation, and also D, labor contract negotiations.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 9:29. We'll meet downstairs in the conference room. We will take a five-minute recess, five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. Okay, welcome back from executive session.